You don't have much time to go. So you can't get to Florida, so it's local Florida, Chester. You go to YouTube TV and log in at dog. You can add this to the.
Yeah.
They could add this to.
Now.
What like to be a right.
Yeah.
So I would think.
Yeah. I thought. Yeah. I thought. Yeah. They thought about it and then the last meeting.
They do a thing called multi meal. She would watch. You have a double one highlighted. So now when baseball is football, it's from the night. Baseball game on one side, six green. Baseball football. So basically take your screen device for. The same size as making two of us two doesn't go. Yes, there's two. But that's. You don't pay. I need to find the council or associate to find their. Family. Family. Kids in college. Yeah. They get company.
Can you close the door, please? Thanks. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Coast Township Board of Supervisors Meeting for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. Will you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to my right. I am a citizen of America. I am a part of our political citizens. I am a nation of America. Indivisible, liberative, and just for all.
Okay, thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. First time in business is the opportunity for public comment. So is there anyone attending who has an issue they would like to raise that is not on the agenda or has a question or comment for the board or staff? Doug?
Yeah, I have to turn it off. A little slide. Thank you. Good evening. Doug White, West Coast Township resident. I have four comments to make, and the first one is just wanted to say happy birthday to mom. I love you, mom. And dad couldn't have done it without you. Thank you, mom. I have three more things I'd like to say. Since October 7th, it's been a very difficult time for many people in our community. To our Jewish community and to all righteous and good decent people, I'd like to just display our flag. And we say, I'm Israel high. To our good people out there, it's outside of our township, but it affects us many. Thank you. That means the people of Israel shall live. Also, I'd like to just compliment Sean Walsh, Mr. Chairman, because since you've been chair, when you run your meetings, you always, whenever there's anything that you deliberate on, you always say, this is my opinion, and you go to each board member and you say, and you ask for everybody's say, and you're very deliberate about that. I appreciate you doing that. Credit to Margie, Ms. Short. Thank you, Margie. And also, I would like to see if there is, well, I think it would be good if the SAC Committee and the Pointing Commission could come up with some ideas to add to our SALDA ordinance, to strengthen the tree replacement standards, and to do anything else to our ordinance that could just improve the environmental impact that land development. Doesn't mean none land development, it just means mainly the tree replacement standards we talked about in that, in our comprehensive plan. I'd like to see that done. And also, I just wanted to say one thing. I know sustainability, environmental, is important to you, and you may know that the state of Israel is a world leader in conservation and sustainability, and just say a little prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. We appreciate your words and my personal thanks for your comment. Thank you. Is there anything else attending who would like to make a comment? Or is it question, Margie?
Good evening. Margie Swart. A couple of just clarifications. So I understand we've had discussions in the past or had questions about in the past about holidays and holiday hours. And on the recent, most recent holiday, Columbus Day, could perhaps the township manager just explain how that works? One time years ago, I was told there weren't, what do you call it, flex holidays? There's a different word for floating holidays. And then, then a couple of years later, we have them, then we don't have them. So is Columbus Day a floating holiday for employees?
No, Columbus, Columbus Day is a township holiday. However, there are certain departments that will choose to work those days if employees choose to take off. They would use their designated holiday time that's allotted to them. The board approves holidays as part of the organizational schedule, and they would be able to use that time at another time.
Okay, so it's just, so it's a township holiday, but some departments just, if the employee wants to work that day, they're able to work?
Mainly the Public Works Department, yes. And they find it's able to, they're able to get assigned tasks done when this building is closed.
Okay, do they get holiday pay for working that day?
They get their regular pay, and they have time because those hours are allotted to them that they can use at a later date. And that's all, that's prescribed in our personnel policy that they're prescribed holidays.
Okay. And offhand, do you know which days are considered flexible or flex? Floating holidays.
They will generally be Marler King Day, President's Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day. I think.
So even.
Four, it's four or five. It's not all of them.
Okay, so clarification, so even if they work a federal holiday, they still get paid straight time and do not get paid time and a half?
No, they do not get paid time and a half.
Okay. And I'm also wondering if it might be wise to look at our, the employees' working hours, mainly parks, streets, and wastewater. You know that, say, East Bradford just went to like a 7:30 to 4:30 schedule because certain times of year, like right now, it's pitch dark at 6 o'clock in the morning. And it's my understanding, told that the employees, although they might arrive at 6 o'clock, they really can't go out and perform any duties until 7 o'clock. So it just seems to me that there's an hour of sitting around more kind of like a break time before they actually go out and do their duties. And if the hours were 7:30 to 4:30, I just think it seems like it would be more effective and efficient use and productive use of time.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Margie.
Okay, and then I forget if it was last meeting or two meetings ago, I asked about the investigation. And I see that that investigation cost the taxpayers $42,000, and I really discourage the board from approving that and paying that bill tonight. It would be great if that firm could do a presentation at a public meeting, kind of like they did at Kennett, kind of like they do at the county whenever any internal investigation goes on, the firm that performed that audit for a lot of money comes in, and they might be more equipped to explain to the public what it is they investigated and what their findings were. So can you just give me an update on where we stand with any board comment on that?
Sure, sure. So the board has decided, anyways, question in the last, last meeting we had, the board has decided that we are not going to do further statement or comment on the internal investigation that we authorize. And that was getting to the practice, unauthorized practice of paid time off in public works that the board and the township manager are unaware of. The investigation was completed at the end of August by our Labor Law Council. That information was reviewed with the board. The board challenged and asked questions about how far we've gone with the investigation. We were comfortable with what had been done. We subsequently determined the appropriate employee discipline, and we had an old employee meeting to review the findings and provide the board's comments. So at this point, the board has decided that the matter is resolved, and we have moved on, and the public works team has moved on. So we consider the situation closed. It was an internal issue only, it involved employees, and we don't feel it's appropriate to go any further with making further public statements.
Well, as a citizen, I, when it involves public funds and theft and misappropriation of public funds.
It did not, it did not involve misappropriation of public funds. I told you before, there's no financial gain or benefit in terms of doblest for an individual. And no matter who did not, our Labor Law Council Advisor Board, we agree that did not need any referral to law enforcement or the DA office.
Okay, so just so you know, I had to hope that we could just discuss it in public, so now I will have to resort to a write to no request.
Yeah.
And I will be asking for the report. You know, this is the county report on COVID-19 antibody test. Of course, I had to get it as part of a deposition, but these are public documents, and that's why I have it. They didn't want it to get out, but you know, it's been here a long time, for 10 years, knowing something terribly is wrong within the walls of these, this building, and, and I'm.
I've described the board's position, so obviously if you want to file a write to no request, you're welcome.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a public comment or question? Very good. Then we'll move on to the next time of business, which is item number four, 2024 budget allocations for fire and EMS services. So this is on the agenda because, I'll see if I can give a little bit of background here, Chris chiming in if I miss some of the key points. Certainly staff and the board have been in the process over the last few months in discussing with the service providers for fire and EMS for the township, where they were with their finances, their operations, what 2024 and beyond look like in terms of the costs and revenue picture for themselves. And I think all the board, to my knowledge, have engaged with the companies, and we've got, have meaningful and fruitful conversations. And this is really all credit to them for being on top of the game and also for their support and activities of the coalition that's been placed for some time now, where we've got a good preview and understanding of what's going on. So Chris had prepared a, in the board packet, and there's a pile of public materials, information about the cost picture for 2024 budget allocations for the township. He's also provided in the same memo detailed information about the historic costs over the last five years. I think most people, certainly the board is aware, and most of the public are aware of significant amount of conversation and activity in Chester County in general about fire and EMS services. Many townships and boroughs have been involved in the ongoing issues related to the increasing costs that have been experienced by our providers, both for personnel costs, equipment costs, and the overall costs of, you know, of operations in general. So I wasn't intending to do a presentation, if the board's okay. I mean, if you want to, I know you guys have another commitment at 7 o'clock. I just wanted to kind of make sure if the board had some questions that they wanted to have in a public forum that with you all in attendance, and thank you for being here. We have the opportunity to do that. So is the board okay with just doing a Q and A with today, versus having a presentation? We've got these materials, we've seen them, so, yeah. So I'll kick it off, if you don't mind, with a couple of questions. So the first one is related to the, last month, we had the information related to the, let's see, what's it called? Make sure I get it right. The foreign fire relief funds and the distribution to the three companies and how that was allocated and provided. And my question is, I know this doesn't count as part of a municipal contribution, but where is it, where is it included on your revenue lines? So for example, in Goodfellas, if, for example, in the fire companies, you know, you have several lines on your revenue that indicate, you know, whether it's, I'm sure I get it the right one, whether it's an EMS billing, in the case of Goshen Fire, fee for services, fire alarm fees, fire billing, fundraising, grants, miscellaneous income, donations, and obviously the contribution. So where does the foreign fire relief funds go when it goes to the fire company? Which is the, what revenue line is it?
So it is not reflected in the Goshen Fire Company, Fire Company budget. They're a separate corporation, Goshen Fires, Goshen Farmers Volunteer Relief Association manages those money, those monies. So that money, the check that's cut by the township, is cut to the Volunteer Farmers Relief Association. That's a separate organization with president, vice president, treasurer, secretary.
Okay, and those funds obviously have been used for certain specific.
Yes.
I forget what they, what are, is it training and equipment of some sort?
Yes, it's, it's for the protection of volunteer members.
Okay.
So it pays, and if the Goshen Fire Company pays for all protective equipment, turnout gear, helmets, coats, boots, and things like that, pays for all training, pays for member physicals, pays for insurance. We also use the money, 25% of the purchase of all fire apparatus is paid for by the Relief Association. So that, that helps us on the capital side, and that's a committed expense through the state order. We spend 25% or, so the Relief Association is responsible for 25% of the purchase of the fire apparatus.
Okay, I guess it's the same for, that's justified, right?
Do you want it?
If, if it's up to you, we can hear you.
Okay, all right. Similar, similar for the Westchester Fire Department, it's shown as a line item coming in and going out of our, our budget, zero for zero. But it goes directly to, to the firefighters themselves, safety, recruitment, retention. Also, a tremendous amount of the money is used for insurance, accidental death, dismemberment policies, 24/7. Unfortunately, we've had to use that. We had a line of duty death in 2012, but that's the largest amount of it goes to, to those insurance policies. Additionally, all of our training, both at our fire training center and throughout the country.
Okay, so that's my question really, is it's treated separately?
Correct, yes.
And what it, what it pays for is not included in the costs on your budget totals?
Correct.
Okay.
And our, so Westchester Volunteer Farmers Relief Association actually puts out more money than they take in.
Yeah.
Due to their investments over the years.
I'd just interrupt, but just for those who don't know, can you explain where the foreign fire companies come from, and come from the state, or from which, how, how does it generate?
I think it comes, does it come from insurance claims when there's fires?
It comes from the state, but basically it's a 2% tax on people's family insurance. If they have a state company, if they have a non-state company, if a company's in state, they don't pay it. Non-state companies do. Actually, the state generates about $880 million, only 9.5% of that actually triples down to, to, I don't know, we're kind of trying to change that, but it's.
Thanks for that question.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. So my next question is related to, in the, the way the, the costs are allocated and determination of that for the fire companies, there's an assessed value piece of it, which I presume is related to the property assessed values for the coverage area in the different townships that we serve. Are Westchester Fire and Goshen Fire using the same basis for the assessed value? Like, what, what, what is the basis and is it the same?
So Westchester, they have an internal GIS person who worked intern with the county, so it all came from the county.
So the county assessed values of property in the service area in this township you serve, right? Is that the same for Goshen?
Yes, we usually carry a total property assessment field in the property parcel.
Okay. Does the board have other questions?
I just want to follow up on the assessed value question. I guess first of all, just want to verify, Goshen does about 40% geographically of the township as far as fire coverage, and conversely, West Goshen, or Westchester Fire Department does 60%. Your assessed value is based upon that portion of the township that you cover, correct? It's not the entire township?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to verify that. And just to follow up from that, can you give some explanation as to what is the logic here of including assessed value in your, part of the formula for your calculation for your contribution request? I'm looking at what the number of calls, for example, from Westchester Fire Department. Westchester Borough has 51.76% of their calls is done to Westchester Borough, whereas 23% of their calls go to West Goshen. But then when you add in the assessed value as part of the calculation for the contribution request, the actual amount that is being requested from Westchester Borough drops down to like 40% compared to an increase of the 27.55% for West Goshen Township. And no mistake is there, West Goshen Township and the other townships are subsidizing the calls for Westchester Borough. So explain to me, what is the logic for including assessed value in your algorithm, if you will, for determining your contribution request?
So that, that derives from historical data and also historical requests from the member municipalities, and we met with all the township managers and borough manager Shawn Metrick worked through the process with Chris and the other borough municipality managers as far as that. So I don't have too much more than that, John. We can go back, and he did all the calculations on that side, so I don't have too much to cover yet than.
I'm going to go through the center right now, see, but is there a different kinds of equipment that you may have to bring to a different assessed value property or something like that, or maybe commercial properties that might be assessed at a higher rate, might require different kinds of equipment? I mean, I'm trying to understand what I get about that.
Good question. Certainly, our response is going to change what we call a hazard box versus a street box. So for instance, some of the commercial entities, we're going to have more apparatus, equipment, personnel coming to that on an initial alarm versus a street box, which would be a single family home or a rental home. So yes, to answer your question there, it's, it's going to be dependent upon the actual hazard itself, and we have this predetermined through our pre-plans, if it's a hazard box like a hospital versus a single family home, it's going to get a different response initially.
Great, do you have anything to add to that?
No, honestly, Goshen used assessed value because Westchester has been using that for the last 10 or 15 years of their contract in order to sort of keep it out of its apples. We, we wanted, you know, to reflect the same sort of formula in our request. Yeah, I think you're right. I think, I think you really can tell the, you know, the state users of your services, they strictly block the number of calls. Obviously, you know, if we're running 20 calls in one township, ten in another, obviously one township is bigger than me. I do think assessed value does play a role in determining what apparatus you buy, how, you know, how you use it in a non-state, you know, just to use, like, if you've got big hazards in, in one township, you've got, you've got staff for that and have the right apparatus for it.
Okay, just to follow up from some of your responses, in terms of apparatus, two fire companies that are vibrant, strongly based within the community, healthy organization financially and otherwise, are you finding that there may be a problem or a situation where there could be a duplication of purchase of equipment that could be considered, maybe in future purchase requirements or considerations in the future going down? I mean, I know you guys depend upon one another to follow up if needed on a particular fire call, but I'm just questioning whether or not so many capital expenses could be curtailed if there was a harder look at the kind of equipment both fire companies had, and do you need to have all the same kind of equipment to answer the same kind of responses?
I think for us, we've been able to maintain our 100% volunteer status. We're able to spread the burden out across the three companies, and we've had the regionalization model for quite some time as far as the 29 square miles we cover. So I believe we're mean and lean as, as it is when it comes to our apparatus and our equipment.
I've been involved with this coalition, Tina and I, for, for a couple of years there. And I can tell you, plus going to conferences, PSATs and throughout the state, we're having a serious problem here in Chester County and throughout the state, maybe throughout the entire country, quite frankly. We're, the traditional model for fire companies has been volunteer-based, and quite frankly, the generations that have come along now just aren't interested in hanging out at the fire station. They just aren't. They've got other things on their mind, other things on their agenda. So we don't have the volunteers out there like we used to, and as a result, we're having to find ways to compensate for that. And that's the reason why I think that we're seeing more and more of a contribution increase, increased request from our fire and EMS companies because of this lack of volunteers. And I think that, you know, what we're dealing with today is just the reality of the matter, and we have to go forward, and this is an essential service that we have to provide to our residents, so I'm fully supporting what they're requesting.
Okay, thank you, John. Tina or Robert, you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. The total property assessment value, is that updated on an annual basis or periodically? It goes into the formula?
No, there's a, I can't do that. The county assessment is, I mean, it's been, it hasn't been done for a while, but there's a, and I don't know if you guys put the fair market value, or do you do the fair, the common level ratio, or do you just use the county assessed value?
I believe it's county assessed value.
So the county assessed value, the county reassessed probably more than 10 years ago, but there's a formula, it's called the common level ratio, every month it gets published by the Department of Revenue, that, so for example, when you pay transfer taxes, you take the assessed value of the property times this common level ratio, which is meant to bring the assessed value up to what fair market value is based on sales. So as long as both of you aren't applying the common level ratio, you're, you're working with apples and apples, but there hasn't been accounting-wide reassessment. There's some formula in the state law as to when they're so out of whack, if the assessed values are so out of whack based on the fair market value, that they have to go through a county reassessment, but they haven't done that because it's a very expensive and lengthy process.
Okay, do we feel as though that figure that they're using on an annual basis to, is it?
Yeah, because it's not, I mean, again, since each fire company is using the same county data, and one's not applying the common level ratio, which would make the value higher, as long as they're each using that same county data, it's fine.
Okay, and we are using the same common level ratio?
No, they're not, they're not applying the common level. They're applying what the county says is your assessed value, yeah.
But the assessed value will be updated relative to new development growth.
The county assessment, I mean, it's been, it hasn't been done for a while. But there's a, and I don't know if you guys put the fair market value, or do you do the common level ratio or do you just use the county assessed value?
I believe it's county assessed value.
So the county assessed value, the county reassessed probably more than 10 years ago. But there's a formula, it's called the common level ratio. Every month it gets published by the Department of Revenue. That, so for example, when you pay transfer taxes, you take the assessed value of the property times this common level ratio, which is meant to bring the assessed value up to what fair market value is based on sales. So as long as both of you aren't applying the common level ratio, you're working with staff. But there hasn't been accounting-wide reassessment. There's some formula in the state law as to when they're so out of whack, if the assessed values are so out of whack based on the fair market value, that they have to go through a county reassessment. But they haven't done that because it's a very expensive and lengthy process.
Okay, do we feel as though that figure that they're using on an annual basis to, is it?
Yeah, because it's not, I mean, again, since each fire company is using the same county data and one's not applying the common level ratio, which would make the value higher. As long as they're each using that same county data, it's fine.
Okay, and we are using the same common level ratio?
No, they're not applying the common level. You're applying what the county says is your assessed value, yeah.
But the assessed value will be updated relative to new development growth, et cetera. So for example, Greystone, you've got a lot of new properties, a lot of new assessed value. That will be in the county database and will be part of any recalculation, whether it's...
Right, and anytime...
Whether the rest of the township's not being, changing its assessed value.
Right, and anytime somebody doesn't improve into their home, that triggers the assessment office to go out and reassess your property.
Right.
I was more concerned about the existing properties that are out there.
But again, it's all on the same common basis. It's not, it's just, to me, the fundamental question is the appropriate use and size of the assessed value in the calculation versus the actual absolute number.
Assessed value, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
All right, one more question.
Yeah.
Just following up from what we just said here. Fully, almost 50% consistently, month after month, year after year, of fire alarm responses aren't made to false alarms. What can be done and what has been done by the fire companies to educate the public or do, take other measures to change the behavior, if you would, of those folks that are causing these false alarms?
You knew John was going to ask that question, so you must have an answer.
So, John, to your kind of earlier point as far as volunteers, it's a, at least from our end, it's a loaded question because volunteer firefighters, they want to go to fire calls. It's what keeps them coming around. It helps with being able to sharpen their skills, training, going on these responses. However, when they're not in a timely, at a good time of day, time of year, the weather, what the other workload is at the time, how many times we've been to the same address, it certainly adds a load onto those volunteers. So as far as education, what we do for the public, certainly every time we go out on a false alarm, we educate the homeowner, the property owner. We go through that process. And then we work in conjunction with the codes department, Andrea and her staff, as far as any follow-up associated with that. And obviously, what you have all done with the ordinance, the building ordinance, that's certainly lightened the load as far as repeat offenders. So I thank you tirelessly for that. But, you know, as far as outreach education, it's a door-to-door when we go out to the actual responses. We don't have any campaigns that we put out there as far as false alarm education. It's more on a case-by-case basis throughout the year. And again, really, it's the codes department that drives it between Andrea and me.
Yes, it's the same for Goshen. A large number of automatic alarms we go to are single occurrences that are residents. It happens once a year, once every 10 years. So when we're there with the homeowner, we're helping every sector system. We're talking to them while getting it serviced and really teaching them how to use their system, which you probably, the first time they've ever experienced that. Where we really reach out and ask for help from the township is when we've been to the same business five times, six times, seven times. That's, you know, we switch from the carrot to the stick and the alarm ordinance and then finds that may be appropriate, you know, should be assessed against somebody that our business just won't be able to ramp system.
Can I add on to that briefly?
Yeah.
Grant and Steve, I don't know if you've spoken with Andrea, but I've spoken with her and she has advised me that some of the raw call frequent flyers, she's alerted them and we have seen declines in their calls over the course of the year since the board increased the fines. Is that accurate?
That was my next question.
You have another question? Are you good?
No, he answered it.
Okay. John, you have anything else?
No, sure.
So I have three comments to make, just to kind of wrap it up. And I'll ask if anyone here has a public question for you guys. So, you know, you look at the raw data here and of course, it paints a picture that looks significant cost increases. And we've already talked about that. He brought us on the journey and explained this, whether it's good fellowship and the cost of staff and how that has risen so rapidly, the inflation, the capital equipment. So there's a good explanation for it. If you look at it over the last five years in the manner that Chris prepared for the board, you know, as we look at our 2024 preliminary budget, it's going to be, over those five years, the total cost of the three companies combined is going to increase by 63%. And on a compound annual growth rate over the five years, it's about 10.2%. So it's a significant cost increase, but we know why. However, if you put it in the context of our general fund budget, if I can find my sticky here, I did a quick look at it. In 2019, our general fund was $15.9 million and the cost of the three contributions we made was $497,000. So only 3% of our general fund budget is going to these essential services. And even with the cost increases that I described over the last five years, for 2024, if we put in the numbers that are proposed in the preliminary budget, the cost would be at 4.1%. So it still represents a relatively small portion, less than 5% of our overall general fund. And obviously, the township residents expect a level of service that you all confidently provide, whether it's EMS or fire response. So I think even though we've seen these cost increases with good explanations why, we know it's not just a county, but a state problem, if not wider, I support the level of expenses that we've just talked about as being in the budget for next year. I mean, said that, I think there are two things I would ask the board to support when we get further along in the process. One is, I think the contracts that we have, I don't want to have a five-year locked-in commitment. I'd rather have a way to say if there is a deterioration in the cost picture, et cetera, that we have an opportunity to, you know, to end a contract and renegotiate it. So I'll be looking at contracts that have, you know, a 90- or 120-day either-party notification calls in it. It's not to say we want to stick with a five-year plan, but I would like that freedom to say, if the picture continues to change and alter, that parties have a chance to say this contract isn't working for us. So I'd like to see that built into our contract. And then the third point I would make is I do agree with John. I think the coalition over the next year or two needs to figure out a way to look at the capital equipment needs of the fire companies in particular and say, is there a better way to do this than have each of you getting the equipment that you believe you need to service everything? Because this is anecdotal. When there is this response to a real fire and we see the level of equipment that shows up, a lot of it is not all necessary for that particular situation. It's being used to transport the required people to get to the location. So to me, there is an opportunity to think differently about the level of capital equipment that is currently managed in a silo by the companies and how it can be better integrated and managed together. So maybe that's a first step in kind of how to continue to trim the ever-increasing costs. Because when you look at the budget numbers, at least Westchester Fire, I think it was 30%, a third of the cost of contractors' armed ability to continue to replace capital equipment. And if there are ways to save that in conjunction with a wider look at equipment, I think that is something the coalition certainly should be having as a goal and an aim to come up with a different way of working over the next year or so. So those are my comments. And with that, I will say thank you again for everything you do because I think you do a great job from what I see here and experience. So is there anyone attending who has questions for any of the three companies, Margie?
Real quickly, it's more a comment I want to point out to the board. On page seven of Goshen Fire Company, this is really the first numbers that point out, are jumped out at me and I looked no farther, especially after hearing lean and mean. It's like, that's music to my ears. But there are support vehicles, there are chief, deputy chief, assistant chief, and utility. They replace those vehicles every 10 years. The assistant chief looks like every 12 years. And I always thought that when the township replaces some of the staff and management vehicles after five years, that that was a taxpayer, government waste. And I hope going forward, maybe we can look at the replacement years on some of our vehicles as well. So I did want to point that out. And then also to the fire companies, I'm just curious, what happens when there isn't a fire hydrant nearby to put out a fire?
To the...
Close to you.
Yeah, that's a great question. We do have a water tanker, we have a tanker. It's house of the Google Fire Company. But what we'll do is what's called a tanker shuttle. So we utilize, speaking about regionalization, it would make sense for us to have a few and Goshen to have a few. We're going to call in regional companies to do a tanker shuttle. So we have, we do have portions of our coverage area, both entities, that are not fully hydrated. They do not have a water source, so we're bringing the water with us. And we're going to have a tanker shuttle. The other thing we might do is we might draft, draft, I think, from a static water source, like the Brandywine, we utilize the Brandywine quite often. Could be something as simple as a swimming pool. That's a rarity because it's just tough to get these apparatus near a swimming pool. That's rare, but ponds, so like North Hills, we have the North Hills option there.
I'm in the Lynx at the ByCast in North New. We have a nice big pond there. And the, just to clarify, the fire hydrants are there for the benefit of the firefighters. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out. The township took the extraordinary measure after picking up the hydrant rental fees for the Lynx for, since it was built. And for some reason, I think it was retaliation, they came, they asked Aqua to turn those hydrants off. And now that hydrant rental fee, we pay double the rental fee on 12 homeowners. So could we, in essence, turn off those hydrants knowing that a tanker truck or the use of the pond is available to our neighborhood?
Here's the only situation, time. It certainly takes more time to bring in a tanker shuttle, set up a draft site. At least the companies you're looking at here, it's a rarity that we do a tanker shuttle or we draft. So it's not muscle memory for us. It's not something we do all the time. So you're going to add time and when potentially lives are at stake, seconds truly count. So you're going to want us to go to a stack, to a water source like a fire hydrant like you have immediately at the entrance of your community there that we're going to grab.
Yeah, I'd love your support. There's like 550 hydrants in the township and there's maybe 20 that they've decided not to pick up the rental fee. And what's going to be interesting with the Greystone development, all of the active adult, so there's like 260 homes, and then the townhomes and the doubles, they're on private streets. So if the township is going to go with what they've said to me over the years is those homes, half of those homes over there will have to pick up the rental fee, which will be double of what Aqua charges the township. But the estate homes and the single-family homes will, they'll get their hydrants or the hydrants there that are for your, you know, for your convenience, will be paid with tax dollars. So anything you could do in that moment?
I wouldn't say that they're for the fire company's convenience. They're for your home, okay? If it takes us an extra 10 minutes to get to your house because of a water supply and a home starting, you want that hydrant to close your house.
Right, but we're not, we're not paying for those individual hydrants. Everybody that, everybody in the township, whether they have a hydrant near their home or not, their taxes go to pay that, the pool of the hydrant fee. So we're paying through our taxes, hydrant fee to cover all, all hydrants in the township. Then we got to pay our own at $100 a pop a month. So there's some unfairness and, you know, it's just, I know it was a retaliatory measure and I've just been working on this for years, but there's always bigger issues. So anyway, just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, Margie. So I have to correct what Margie says, not completely true statement. And we've had multiple discussions with Margie on this over the years. The township has a specific building code requirement and it's stated in there that private fire hydrants are not, maintenance is not paid for by the township, only ones that are public. So the HOA that the Lynx owns is responsible for the maintenance cost of these fire hydrants, which are actually owned by the water utility. So we've made that very clear to Margie over the years, but she doesn't accept the answer. So thank you again for attending, guys. We appreciate it. I'll leave you with the fact that I hear that the board is including the requested amounts in the preliminary budget. We have a couple more months to go to get the actual firm to sign up on that. But we appreciate the work you've done into providing us with this level of information and being here tonight, so thank you.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to this, can I address just two brief items to work? One thing is I did include, as Steve's been a part of these discussions, we are working on the new Westchester Borough fire contract. So I included the cost information over the proposed five years. One thing that will change from this model is, from the current model, is previously it was a flat fee through every year. The Borough has proposed doing incremental increases throughout every year, which we think, we kind of all thought made a lot of sense. So it's not all hitting everybody all in one shot when their contractor renews. Part of this was also to discussion about capital items. In this proposed five-year contract, the capital replacement schedule is relatively light. However, given the environment that we're in in terms of rates, what we've discussed is siphoning off a, increasing the amount we would contribute so that we can put a dedicated portion towards capital in a dedicated fund to solve. I think this is all correct, Steve. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
Putting a dedicated amount towards that and realizing some of that interest so that we can kind of use the money that's paid into our advantage for a replacement schedule. And also doing multi-municipal grant applications to replace equipment.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Well, we'll watch the next item, which is agenda item number five. Discussion on possible approval of the following agreements associated with the installation of new weight-bearing signs for Chester County tourism, signing district agreement for the tourist-oriented directional signing and a delegation agreement for roadside sign responsibilities. So this was before the board, was it the last meeting or the meeting before?
Our last meeting.
Last meeting. And we only had one of the agreements available to us at the time and we deferred actually voting or making a decision on approving the agreements until solicited to Kristen and had a chance to get the additional agreement and review it with staff. And so I guess at this point, we have both those agreements in front of us. And Kristen, oh, Chris, do you have any comments on these agreements?
No, I just, I didn't think it was as clear as it could have been in the agreement that the Conference and Visitors Bureau drafted, that every responsibility of the township that's stated in the PennDOT agreement is being taken care of. And the Conference and Visitors Bureau is 100% responsible for anything that the sponsor has identified in the PennDOT agreement is responsible for. So that basically you're assigning, I wanted to call it an assignment agreement because that in my mind is what it was doing. But the PennDOT agreement says that you need PennDOT's consent to assign it. And so I backed off that request and said delegation was fine. She did assure me and she had an email that they had, I did also want to make sure that PennDOT knew that we were entering these delegation agreements. And she said that they have, that PennDOT is aware of that. So the only thing I'll point out, Chris, this is for you really, it looks as if the PennDOT agreement is a fillable form because of paragraph 24, you're supposed to be entering your notice.
Unfortunately, the one they sent, the one they sent me was an image, so I'll have to get the final document from them.
Yeah, and we tried to find it on PennDOT's website. We were unable to do that, so we just need to get that from Susan. But no, I'm satisfied with both agreements being entered with the revisions made.
Okay, thank you. Board, do you have any questions?
Just one quick question, just for matter of record. Can you explain why the Chester County Board of Tourism, or Chester County Tourism Board, why did they have to go through us? Because they're taking all our responsibility here. I can't PennDOT just sign an agreement with them.
PennDOT only, it's like owning the Storm, Storm facilities and PennDOT roads, they're requiring municipalities. So they're, it's their standard and their practice that it has to be municipality that serves as the sponsor.
So even though we're just kind of like a go-to, it's just bureaucratic rule that they have?
That's correct.
That we have to do, okay.
That's how I would describe it, yeah.
Other questions? Tina?
No.
Robert? So some, one thing that, I mean, the agreements are fine, but one thing that's still not sits, is not sitting well with me is I asked a question about the Westchester University graduate center signs that's being replaced under this tourist mandate or approach. And I just don't think they really represented a tourism sign. And the answer was given, while they exist, we have to replace them. And I'm still not satisfied that's an acceptable answer. So they did say there's going to be an option to review the final sign design and locations because there was another one, another new location that was being proposed. Again, it didn't... Again, I didn't agree with it, because it was right inside of, right at the boundary of private property, and it doesn't have one today. I didn't think it was specifically necessary. So, I don't know if this is to Chris really, is there going to be a chance to vet and agree and challenge these specific signs with the tourists? Or once we sign this, or once we sign this, are we out of the picture? No, we can't.
I think, Chris, I'm correct if I'm wrong, I think once we sign this, we're kind of delegating authority to them. And they're doing this under a grant, I believe, so they're subject to whatever provisions there were for the grant. It might be one of those situations where the sign was installed under a previous grant, and now that they're changing out, they have to continue to comply with the original approval. So that might be the situation.
But, I mean, that being said, I don't think that, I still think your comment is valid. I think you should raise it to her and see if there's anything they can do about it.
Yeah, just to follow up with it, John, the other part that bothered me was the entities that don't exist anymore, they're still making signs for.
Like which ones?
QVC, you know, as far as, as far as the store, doesn't QVC have a sign?
Well, QVC still exists.
Do the campuses?
You still have, you don't do the tours anymore?
The tours, that kind of stuff. So maybe there's others out there, I don't know, but if they don't exist anymore, I asked that question specifically, and they said they're going to put the exact signs up as they're there now. So I guess I just think that we should do a review of places that don't exist anymore rather than replacing the sign.
Did you guys get the list of signs?
We got the list of signs that they sent.
I would say that if you want to approve it, approve it with the condition that you communicate back to her that they would like you to evaluate. You would like them to take a look at the signs in West Goshen, to see if any of them are antiquated, because the use no longer exists. Or is it really something that is, like the Westchester University example, an attraction that you want to be promoting tourism for? And just put that out there. I mean, it saves them money if they don't have to replace a sign that doesn't need to be there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if there's nothing more frustrating than something that won't let you make it correct, to me at least, and...
Why bother?
Yeah, okay. All right, so with that discussion, well, let me see, is there any comment from the public at this point on this? Do you have any further thoughts? Margie?
So this is just what's going out for proposal. This is explaining everything I didn't really take the time to read through this.
This is what we're going to approve tonight, these two agreements.
Oh, I did see, so the bids are already in.
It's not, it's not.
This is a bid, this is a bid project.
This is a delegation of putting up new tourist signs to this tourism.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going on to the next agenda.
Okay, okay. So do you have any comments on the tourist sign?
No, I don't have any. Thank you very much.
Is there a board member who would like to make a motion to approve signing these two agreements, subject to any conditions?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, now, what's the motion, Tina?
The motion is to approve this, subject to the conditions that we get the answer to whether we can, they can review the list of signs that are going to be made and see if they're adequate, still exist.
Okay, so the motion is made by Tina to approve the two agreements, subject to a review by the board with the Chester County Tourism Bureau of the specific sign design and locations, correct?
That's it, John.
Okay, so is there a second?
I'll second it. Is that going to be problematic as far as implementing this?
What's the sign?
I don't think it is, because they specifically said they wanted to review the sign locations. So we're just, we're just referencing the fact that they made that comment when they presented this to us the first time.
So aren't they going to get in touch with Chris Pashu at the end, or are they getting ready to do this?
Yes.
All right, I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any board questions or comments on the motion? Is there any public comments or questions? Okay, now, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes 5-0. Okay, thank you. Next is agenda item number six, discussion on possible authorization to issue a request for proposals for the development of a new zoning ordinance for West Goshen Township. Chris, would you like to introduce this, please?
I guess, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is a draft request for proposals for the development of a new zoning ordinance for the township. The current zoning ordinance was adopted on December 13th, 1972, and has gone through a variety of amendments until adoption. There are certain issues with the current zoning ordinance that pertain to the cumbersome nature of the document, as well as not accurately addressing redevelopment. Additionally, the township did adopt a new comprehensive plan in 2019, and zoning ordinance should be revised to ensure conformance with the township's comprehensive plan. The draft RFP that's before the board was prepared by the Land Planning Committee, and the proposed draft RFP was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on October 10th, where it was recommended for issuance. One item that I'll note in the draft RFP is it does make reference to using the Penn Bid System. However, Brian and I have discussed this, we also talked about it with a colleague at East Whalen Township, and they found no real advantage to using the Penn Bid System. We've also had pretty good success in doing advertisements and receiving a lot of competitive proposals, like we did for the pension RFP last year, as well as the park recreation and open space plan this year. So Brian and I are comfortable receiving forward in our normal manner of soliciting proposals.
Thank you, Chris. Does the board have, board have any questions? So Brian, do you have any other comments?
No, I would do it, Chris. Your agenda is not necessarily this.
So you would just put out a, you would submit to specific consultants, a request for them to provide an RFP, and you put it also like a notice in the daily papers, something like that?
That's what we have. The one thing I, I actually learned this today, one other system we could utilize to kind of get it out to more firms is Pennsylvania Municipal League does have a program where they can, you can put RFPs up through, through them to the same manner that they use to advertise for like positions and for jobs and things like that. So we could also solicit proposals through that. So you're going to use that? Yep, I think, this is going to be my, my first foray with that. I've never used it before.
The county also has a list, when you do through the VPP program, a list of approved planners, so you might want to get your hands on that. There's like 20, 25 planners on there.
And since we already have an active VPP project, I can contact Build a Guarantee to use there, and we can send it directly to them.
So if you get that list, are you going to reach out to those 20 individual firms, or are you going to just at least know, I mean, how do you even solicit the widest number of bids, is what I'm trying to get to? You've got these different avenues, but what approach is going to be the most productive?
I think it's going to have to be a combination of all, when we were doing advertisement in the Daily Look, when we were doing advertisement with the, in the municipal job junction, we could advertise that through the municipal league. Brian has a lot of contacts from his past life in the private sector, so we could utilize that. And then we would just send it directly to planners, that's what we did with the park recreation and open space plan. We advertised it, and we got some that we sent directly to, and some that contacted us for it.
Okay.
Let me ask you another question. In the RFP, the way it's created, it's currently written, we have a rather aggressive timeline here. We're talking about the RFP being issued for a couple days, and to be returned to the, all proposals due by November 17th. So we're talking a month away, so is that due?
I think so. I think so.
At least a month.
Yeah. Standard proposals typically, for professionals versus typically a month?
Yeah, John, I mean, firms like ours, if we were heading to an RFP, we have, one, pretty much prepared. We obviously tailor it to the specific task. So I think the types of agencies and planning departments or planning organizations that you're going to have, one, that defines what they've done, has their, you know, curriculum B-takes and their projects, they will then tailor it to your specific, but I think a month's time is definitely sufficient.
Other questions? Okay, now, ready to see if the board is in a position to authorize this request for proposals? Is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for the development of a new zoning ordinance for West Goshen. Is there any board questions or comments on the motion?
Well, it was discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting on October the 10th, and the only change was with just one word, to change the focus areas from primary focus to just focus areas, and that was it. Otherwise, it was approved on the way.
Yeah. I am a member of the Land Planning Committee, so I'm familiar with this document as well. Mr. White, Dr. White said earlier this evening, mentioned in his comments about trying to find ways to improve our ordinances with respect to environmental impacts, such as pre-replacement standards. Although we can try to address that in the short term, absolutely, these are the kind of things that a comprehensive zoning ordinance update will have the opportunity to look at and make changes to. So that's a good example. Okay, so is there any public comment or questions on the motion? Margie?
My concern with this is that it's usually a developer that comes in, they wants to build something, or she wants to build something somewhere, and it's not zoned that way, so their attorney rewrites an amendment for our zoning. And so the board, the planning commission, everybody approves it. So my concern is, we're going to do a whole new zoning ordinance, and then we're, we're still going to allow people to come in and change the zoning.
I think that's a good question, but I would flip around, say, because this stuff hasn't been updated since 1970, no one's looked at it to say what would make sense in these different areas, et cetera, and should we need to have it so that we don't have to have people come in and say, we want this or that or the other? Because we'll give it some forethought, some consideration, an exercise like this, to update these ordinances appropriately, so that new uses that are commercial that didn't exist in 1970 can be looked at. And, you know, you're fairly familiar with the quality in, I mean, originally it was about, can we make this zone for apartments? And the board said no. And then ultimately, it was like, what would be the most effective use for this parcel given its horrible road access in and out? And we wanted a low volume that would have minimum impact to the neighborhood, while still providing a better use of the property than a crime-ridden quality in. And so we ended up with what I believe was a great outcome for that particular parcel. So these things will always potentially exist, Margie, but this allows to get much closer to avoiding them, in my opinion, from the current state of affairs. Chris, you had a comment?
No, I was just going to say, there's no way to prevent that from occurring.
Right. I, yeah, I just wish we could be more steadfast somehow, because the previous municipalities, I just recall, you know, boards.
Well, every situation will be different. Some will be no, and some might be yes, right? Doug, you had a question?
I have two, two comments up. If you approve this sign, what, what would happen if for some reason you put this out and get these bids, and then for some reason you just decide not to do it? Does this commit you to doing it?
No. This is, this is a professional service. We can reject all the bids and do nothing. We can look at the bids and decide that the lowest bidder isn't the appropriate one, because they don't like some of the way they responded, and how they tend to approach it, or the qualifications of the individual. So because it's a professional services proposal, the board has discretion on how to move forward, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, you don't have to give a word to them.
And then, so my understanding is, let's say you go ahead and do this, and let's say you start to do this, and you have, there's supposed to be input from land planning, land commission, public, a little bit like the way.
Compass.
So let's say we're doing this, we can guide this whole thing, so let's say there's a section of the ordinance that really doesn't need to be changed that much, just kind of moved around a little bit, but the essence of it can remain. We can do that, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. We're in control of this process. These are hired hands to help staff, the public, the board, get a better shaped product, so that we have something that meets what we need for the future, not something that met the needs in 1970.
So, so if there's something that, is there that basically works, we just have to make it just a little more clear, but the essence of it is?
Yeah, there might be whole sections that have very little change at all.
Some are more recent sections.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, so, did we have a motion yet?
Ayes.
Okay, so we're ready, I think we're, if there's any more public questions or comments, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes 4-0. I think I've been saying 5-0, Chris, it's 4-0 tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I've been making sure that my notes are 4-0.
Okay, thank you for helping me out.
Not a problem.
Next on the agenda is agenda item number seven, discussion on possible approval of a stormwater basin improvement agreement between West Goshen Township and Chester County. And I believe Brian is going to explain this one to us.
Tonight before you is an agreement that's been worked on for about six months between the township staff and county staff, county solicitor, county solicitor, county manager, for the stormwater basin, which is located where I'm circling here between the intersection of West Tupperboro and Addy Drive, adjacent to the parking lot at the Government Services Center Building. As you're aware, this is in our pollution reduction plan, it's part of our MS4 program. It was put in the, accepted by the state. We have voted to put it into the budget, decided for this year in 2023 to move forward with the design. Carol and Jerry, who was the, Jerry and Chris engaged based upon their proposal. We approached the county in, I believe, March about doing this stormwater testing out there, and at that point, that's when we started this process to develop a, started as a membrane of understanding, it ballooned into, it became better as an exciting agreement. The agreement in front of you is an agreement to outline responsibilities for dory and air construction, and also some agreements for maintenance and maintenance access, maintaining access to the building, because then I have a one center in the building, so we have to maintain local access at the site. So this agreement has been viewed by myself, by Chris, the manager, and by Kristen, has also been reviewed, embedded through the county solicitor and the county facilities department. We were first, we would be the first to issue the agreement, and we would send it signed to the county, for the commissioners to vote and sign it. Once that's signed, then we can then move forward with the design of the basin and the construction.
Okay, we, we know what we're going to do in terms of conceptual design, it's just the detail design that needs doing.
Yes.
This is one of how many projects that was, were in our MS4, I mean, that the state approved one of four. We've only done one today, right?
Well, we have, we have two under contract right now for design with Cal, and two more to put out for design.
So not been through construction phase yet?
Not before that were involved for 23 and 24.
Okay. So this property, my understanding is potentially at some point for sale by the county, is that correct?
It's my understanding that they're considering it, but...
So would this agreement be an obligation on the new owner as well?
Yes.
Yeah, runs with the law.
Runs with the law. And could you highlight the key provisions in the agreement relative to the ongoing need to maintain and repair whatever improvements are made?
So it's paragraph seven that talks about after the project is completed, basin improvements have been inspected, township is responsible for operation, maintenance, and repair of the basin, so that it functions in accordance with the design. The cost of routine maintenance and repairs, which includes mowing, line trimming, traction degree removal, similar landscaping tasks are shared equally by the township and county. On an annual basis, township invoices the county for one-half of the routine maintenance and repair costs. Anything that costs more than $5,000 has to be submitted to the county for prior approval. The township is solely responsible for nonroutine repairs, modifications, rehabilitation that's needed, at the township's sole expense of coordination, review, and approval by the county. And the paragraph 10, any credits for reduction of sediment discharge that the, that we receive from the DEP goes specifically to the township under its POP.
So what kind of ongoing maintenance do you think this will require from the township once it's installed?
Biannual, twice a year will be moved, and that's routine maintenance, right? So that will be shared.
So why, why is the county, you know, responsible for routine maintenance like they are today? Why are we taking on half the cost of mowing that land? I understand that we're going to pay for the revised installation, and that if there's a deterioration in that, we need to fix it, and it's our expense to get it back to whatever pollution reduction prevention is, it's going to do for us. But why are we paying for the 50% of the ongoing mowing of the area?
Well, there's, this is going to be extended detention and water quality filtration basing, so there's going to be some additional design work and substructure installed within the basin, but it's not for now. Now you can just run the mowers through it. The future is a little, it's going to be different, it's different routine maintenance than just running the mowers through it.
Who selects the company that's going to perform this, make it so they don't damage what we've paid the money to put in? You, the township, you, or the county is just going to continue their existing contract with certain new instructions?
Well, the way this is written, it's the township, I think.
We decide.
I mean, the township is responsible for it, so I think the township can dictate who's doing it.
We dictate who does it and then they can handle it. And we get a hundred percent of the credit for it to put up here.
Yeah, I like that. Other questions from the board on this agreement? Have we done the surveying to make sure it's gonna do what we want?
Yes, survey's complete, the infiltration testing is complete. The weapons installation is complete and we stop at that point until we report with full design, until we have the agreed with.
So also this is put in place, then we're gonna get Carol Engineering to do the detailed design. It'll be a twenty-four construction timeframe project?
Yes.
And that'll be included in the capital budget for next year?
Yes.
And can we use the American Rescue Plan funds to pay for the construction?
No, this was not an ARPA project. This was separate in our, um, in our capital reserve fund, response for projects.
But we haven't started the work yet, so we've not, why are we committed to having to use capital reserve funds versus ARPA funds?
Now, we could use, the board could choose to designate this as an ARPA project.
The reason I'm asking that is at the last meeting, Mark was here and he said the Andrews Drive project that we had believed we were gonna use the ARPA funds for is more in a kind of maintain and hold and see if there's a further work needed. And there wasn't a burning need to spend the money on that particular location. Versus here we've got a project that looks like it's gonna be done in twenty-four. And the goal was to kind of use ARPA funds to get these kind of projects completed. So I, I'm suggesting we maybe budget twenty-four to spend half the money on this project or this fourth thing.
So the Andrews Drive project is budgeted at, the revision, I think was about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we could change, we could change the work to this project in the twenty-four budget.
Yeah, I know what the cost is for this project. So we don't have to, we don't have to make the decision, do I?
No, I mean, it would be helpful for Christine as she's finalizing the budget because her and I are gonna sit down next week and review everything. So we could, we could move it around theoretically or we can move it around further in the budgeting process. The board just has to allocate and commit the funds by the end of twenty-four.
Okay, any other questions for the board?
Yeah, just sort of a little history here, a little background. Why is it that the township is responsible? Looking to take one as possible for stormwater improvements to a property that's owned by the county. What's in it for us?
You're getting your credits under your PRB.
Okay, explain what that means. Why is it that we're looking to get credit for the MS four?
You have to reduce your pollution. And so I'll let, I'll let Brian talk about the engineering side. You have to build a plan that tells the DEP you're gonna do it.
A mandate from the state to do this, explain what that mandate is.
So five years ago, we got a permit, it's a township, our MS four permit says we have to reduce the pollution, which is sediment. And also, I believe we have phosphorus or corporate, it's a sediment load reduction we have to meet to reduce the sediment and leaving the township in the middle of a recent couple of, our permit requires us to do that. In the PRB plan, which is your pollution reduction plan, until that's when buried with it, which is T and P Atlas, being two, this is what we're counting. We are as a municipality. That plan was developed over time, was amended again last year with the contract. The H R G amended it to move some of the projects around for priority. And this was a project that was identified years ago as a basin that is not a water quality basin, it's just a strip retention basin. Retrofitted, we can get some credits for it. We get a fair amount of credit for it because it's a large drainage and it's a large basin. And that was put in the PRB that was adopted, initially adopted, probably just for ten years ago, the first one that and has been subsequently amended through the last ten years. And last year, this is one of the projects that we authorized to go forward with the understanding because it's a project.
So the point is if we don't do these projects, we can get fined, except the, except what we're looking at?
You'd be out of compliance with your permit, yeah.
But why do we pick this basin to do this one versus other projects in the county or the township that we can still get credit for? Why is this one?
That I can answer.
I would think, I mean, I think it's attractive because the county's the owner of the land and you're working with another cooperative agency that actually, you know, dictates your stormwater management ordinance and understands what the state obligations are with respect to stormwater management and MS four permits. So I think having that cooperative government to government was probably one of the things that Rick looked at as being a positive thing for why. You know, some of them, I know we talked about on HOA owned land, sometimes HOAs don't, you know, don't touch my land, don't come on my land, don't, you know. So I just think having the county be the owner of this property was probably one of the positives.
And I think the other thing, taking into consideration of what Brian said about the large number of credits, I think given the size, scope, and scale, it maximizes the benefit under our permit.
Okay, and one other question from an engineering perspective or maintenance that has to be done on the basin. Is there any circumstance where we would be able to go land on an emergency basis or out of normal business hours to do any work on the basin? At any time or any chance?
No. Should, the only way that would happen is on some extreme event like.
Flooding or?
Not even that, because this is a flood control measure as well. This would be a tanker truck drives in there full of gas and rolls over the basin. That could be something.
That's a different emergency than this agreement.
And the only reason, the only reason why I ask that is because on section eight, it says that we are only allowed access during the normal business hours to perform all work compensated by the agreement. And I just thought in the case.
Throw that away, throw that away if there's emergency. I mean, I would, I would look at the agreement, but I mean, I'm happy if you want.
Yeah, during business hour, except for emergencies.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Yeah.
And if there's an emergency basin, then they're not calling last year. We're not gonna call, come out at one, two o'clock in the morning on Sunday, this is probably a basin. It would be something, it would be something like an accident, a fire, something here. It would be something from the basement.
So Brian, can you just describe to me and anyone listening, you know, if this project goes, when this project goes in, will the noticeable reduction in or improvement in water quality leaving this site will go to which creek, you know, the one that's, is it right there, right? Goose Creek, is it?
It discharges to the creek right here below Addy Drive.
So we expect that the, what's the description of this new basin called?
It's an extended detention in water hole.
That will have less sediment in the water leaving it that gets into Goose Creek after this project's done than exists today?
Yes.
All right, so I know people here have got some questions, including Margie. So is there any public comments or questions about this first foray into spending money on stormwater improvements on our township property? Right, we haven't funded one of these before?
Uh, we did basins at Idlewild.
That was funded by the Sunoco.
Volkswagen.
Volkswagen.
Volkswagen, yeah.
Was Volkswagen, was Sunoco?
Either way, that was, that was, that was the ME two grant, was the Idlewild project, it was the ME two grant. The Volkswagen funds were for the charging stations.
So questions, Margie?
Well, first of all, I don't understand why this wouldn't be borne by all the taxpayers of the county, so this county owned property.
Well, you know the answer to that because we have begun with a permit by the state that says we in our township have to reduce the pollutants. This is in our township, like it was explained, the best, largest scale kind of project here, the biggest bank of the book. That's the answer to that question.
All right, so I went over there the other day, whatever day, Saturday, Sunday, it rained all day long. It was a miserable day, I went over there at like ten, I went over there at six. There's barely any water. And I'm afraid what Idlewild looks like, I went from there over to Idlewild. I don't know if you've gone over there and looked up in two years. It, it looks four times worse than it did before it was retrofitted. And so you're taking a basin that after, it barely gets any water in it to begin with. When it does, it's gone within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So now you're going to keep it there and get moss, mosquitoes, and it's gonna, it's gonna look terrible in two, two years. Please, before you do this, go over to Idlewild and see if what's there now is the intended results after two years. I would hope.
So let's ask Brian if he has a view on that, so.
I have, I have not been to Idlewild base.
So the intention these, these is to retain water for twenty-four, forty-eight hours, right? Not to let it basically pass right through because sediment hitting the water.
Which is not what we're the three.
When you say it looks terrible, it may be because it's doing what it's supposed to do. The goal is not to have a basin that doesn't hold anything and it just doesn't infiltrate and it washes right through, takes all the silt into the creek. So that's the intention I believe behind these designs. Now, again, I can't speak for Idlewild, I'm not gonna look at it. I don't know if it's functioning exactly as intended, but certainly we can do that. It won't necessarily look as aesthetically pleasing as an empty basin that doesn't get any water in it.
Well, I would just ask that maybe with our new drone or wait for a good rain and go over there during the rainfall or right after rainfall with the drone and get pictures to see what it actually does and how it functions now. Because all this stuff was done on modeling.
Yeah, I agree with you, Margie.
During, what did actually happen? And I'd love for you to see, the township engineer, to see how it actually is modeling.
Well, I commit to you that whatever design Carol comes up with, we'll have them in front of us and the board and you and explain why what they're proposing will be better than it is now and why it will look differently and it will help them describe the current performance as well, so. We're not approving that design tonight, we're just trying to approve the project to be at this location.
I think it's cut through all up and down and it's overtaken the whole place.
At Idlewild, okay. Any other questions? Steve?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Margie to some extent too. I mean, I go up by the one for hospital all the time, it's a big basin and all the parking lots kind of drained into. And at times we get four, five, I mean, we get that heavy rains, maybe you fill up with two, three feet of water, but it never, ever gets, you know, fifteen feet deep that that pit is. So maybe, you know, maybe there is some consideration here for not, for doing maybe less, I don't know. But the other comment here is it keeps us from buying another street sweeper because of it, I'm all for it.
I don't think we'll stop that because as you heard at the last meeting, to get the credits for street sweeping, we need to be doing more of the roads. Unless we have a twenty-four hour street sweeper, which we don't want.
I know.
Can I just add on the street sweeper line because I wanted to bring up the public comment that didn't. But I verified at the last meeting, street sweepers aren't meant and designed, you're not supposed to sweep roads that don't have curves because they're in essence self-cleaning. So we're only supposed to be cleaning curved streets.
That's a good point. So we'll have to look at whether we claim the credits, you know, whether we claim the credits or.
Yeah, and it's a long man hours and stuff.
I don't think anything up on.
Are there sometimes there's curved streets and then parking lanes go on?
Yeah, what we found is the curved streets now have asphalt berms because people don't want the stormwater running into their yard. They'd rather directly onto the next yard, so maybe there isn't a, maybe there isn't a curb there anyway. All right, so any other questions related to this agreement tonight that the board has before it? Okay, so board, you know what I'm gonna ask? Is everyone talking? I'm waiting for someone to make the motion to approve the stormwater basin improvement agreement between the township and Chester County with the addition of Tina's comment that we could access the property in emergency.
I think you just made that motion, I just seconded it.
All right, thank you. Any board comments on the motion, the questions? Is there any public comment or questions? Okay, then we'll take your vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing non-the motion passes four zero. Next on the agenda is item number eight. Discussion on possible approval of resolution number twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the statewide local share assessment grant program for the installation of a sidewalk on West Rosedale Avenue. And Chris, you have the board after this, but would you mind just reminding us where we are with this? I know we had a conversation today on it.
Ayes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is proposed resolution twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three. This resolution will authorize the submission of a grant application to the statewide local share assessment program for the construction of the sidewalk on West Rosedale Avenue. I'll note in there that I did revise the resolution and there's a new copy in front of the board and it would request a grant amount of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The grant submission deadline is November thirtieth of this year. There does not appear to be a match requirement for this program, however, there is a one hundred dollar application filing fee. So Chris Peterson from Carol Engineering did do a preliminary design that we could include in the grant application. It's up on the screen for review. We did discuss the possibility of installation of curbing as part of the project that was outlined. I also spoke with Brian about that. And based on that discussion, we're of the opinion that curbing should not be included with this project and we're basing that on the following. In talking to Chris and Brian, the proposed location of the new sidewalk would provide adequate separation between pedestrians and motorists based on a review of the distances. Additionally, the installation of curbing would dramatically increase the cost primarily due to impacts on stormwater management measures that would need to be installed. Currently, the project would be able to utilize a simplified approach method for stormwater management. And the addition of curbing would require full stormwater management and there's a question of where that new stormwater could be directed. So it would essentially, it would increase the size, scope, and scale of the project. So this is the plan that Chris has worked up currently. There would need to be some additional right of way that would need to be acquired for this project to move forward. He is designing the curb in such a way to go around the existing.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, sorry. The existing curb to go around the half wall and the, and the trees that are currently in place and avoid impacting the driveway. There would also be some new accessible ramps that would have to be installed. So this would connect the Cambridge Apartments and provide what I'll refer to as like a last mile connection to, to the existing sidewalk on the south side of West Rosedale Avenue.
So the tree is not being stood down?
I don't believe so.
The tree's, tree's right here.
Yeah, I do not believe so.
Design goes around the eye there.
And that's why there would have to be additional right of way that would need to be acquired.
And the cost estimate that was updated with this updated design includes getting that right of way, additional right of way?
Correct, it's approximately ninety, the cost estimate that Chris provided was ninety-eight thousand dollars, including engineering, design, everything.
And then we had a, for everyone's information, Chris, myself, and John were on a call with the, one of the program managers for this local share program. And here is specific guidance relating to the, how to submit the application, how to outline the costs involved and what are considered, the engineering fees that would be allowed versus what we would have to match, et cetera. So there's a little bit of update to that particular information before we submit the application, correct?
Correct.
Does the board have any questions or comments on the, this resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, John, answer a second.
I'll second that.
Is there any board comments or questions on the motion? Or is there any public comments or questions on the motion, Steve?
Just a grant requirement for your question?
Yes, in fact, we can submit multiple applications per year, per year round. That's something, that's something I learned.
Have we got results from them?
I'm sorry, do you read that?
We got results.
This is only the second year.
This is the first time we've done this. And this is the second time that, to what the chairman just said, this is the second time, this is the second year this has been open. The money for this program comes from the gaming taxes on casinos and racetracks. I believe they said there's a pot of roughly two hundred and twenty-five million dollars that's gonna be available this year. And it's gonna continue going forward, but I do think, I think they said they got seven hundred applications last year, or more.
Eight hundred, I think it was.
And so they do get a sizable amount of funding, a sizable amount of applications for the funding. But it happens, this is the second year they've done it. In theory, it's gonna continue. And this is actually the program that we've talked about, doing a multi-municipal application for fire, for fire apparatus as part of the Muschesford Fire Department contracts. Because you can use it to buy equipment, you can use it for a large variety of purposes.
Well, the current, the current year the program closes, applications have to be submitted by November thirtieth and that would be into the next year, so. This application will be submitted before November the thirtieth and then that will be reviewed in twenty-four, where it's up to a year before we'd like to know the answer again as to whether we will get the money.
Yeah, just so the board is aware, the timeline we were given today would be probably announcing awards in September of twenty twenty-four, so this would be a twenty twenty-five project.
Doug, you have a question?
Yes, two questions, please. You mentioned curving would be recommended, I thought it would be a good idea last time, but what is the space distance between proposed sidewalk and street?
The distance between the edge of the road and the sidewalk is about twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
Yes. The sidewalk will be above the road.
Yes, so would, in lieu of a sidewalk, would it be possible or practical to install some sort of fencing or some sort of mechanism to provide pedestrian safety?
In lieu of, you said, that, you meant, you meant curving, right? In lieu of, you said, that sidewalk, you meant, you meant curving, right?
Yeah, in lieu of the curving, would there be practical or possible to install something that could provide some pedestrian safety? Some sort of fencing, something that would be not a curb, but something that wouldn't cost too much?
What do you think?
Well, our orders doesn't permit fencing in the front yard. That would be considered a front yard.
In the front yard?
Well, it doesn't permit, I don't think, fencing in the roadway.
Right, it'd have to be in the roadway.
Okay, so.
So there, we, there might be something, I'll say, soft with potential, other than, right now it's proposed to be grass.
Grass?
And sidewalk is sitting above the.
So is this proposed sidewalk act great with the street?
No, sidewalk is above the, above the street.
Okay.
Sidewalk is elevated.
I think not much, right?
It's a little elevated.
About what, nine, twelve inches?
Okay, so you have the grade, but other than the grade of the space, there's not, there's really nothing.
So like right here at this point, according to this plan, the sidewalk right here is three feet above the road edge, it's right there.
Three feet?
Yes.
Wow.
At that, at that place.
Yeah, there is three feet. This is, yeah, I'm just looking here. One, two, three, one, two. So as you get closer to the apartments, it's closer to gray. As you get up to the corner, it's going to be higher.
Okay, so, so what sort of thing of engineering best practice is, what could be in lieu of a curb that could be done?
There could be landscaping, which requires more maintenance. So there's things that can be done that I would say is soft, it's like a landscaping, but this is, in this instance, you have elevation. You have sidewalk sits above the road. That is a engineering practice for safety as well, an elevate.
So that this last mile, you know, what it connects to some of the, some of the areas, there's curbing and the sidewalk right adjacent to the street, just the curb. There are other areas where there's no curb.
If you get down to the Cambridge apartments, there's no curving down there.
There's no curb down there.
So in your, in your opinion, what would the risk really be to pedestrians in this case with the proposed, with curbs?
There's always a risk though, right? I mean, well, there's a risk right now because it's a slippery muddy path and nothing that people don't want to walk on, step in the road to get around potentially. So it's an order of magnitude change in relative risk to what it is today and that's what's being requested by people who came up petition does. Is it the ultimate perfect design? Because if you design it from square one, you would have something different. No, but it's ninety percent of the way there in my opinion.
And it's also possible, quite even, different to jump curb.
Well, yes, that's, aside from saying.
But this would be a vast improvement over what they have right there. Right now, they're forced to walk the street and the street there is very narrow.
Brian, I don't, I don't want to misquote you, but I believe when we got the sketch plan, you were surprised at how high the grade changes.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah. As it gets closer to the corner up here by where the church driveway is, you can see how much higher, look down here, you can see how much, there's a, the curb line is, the proposed sidewalk will be almost adjacent to the fence line.
And then it comes back around.
And it comes back with the fence behind this, follows the fence line.
I think it's pretty good, Doug. It's not as close to the roads, you might have thought when we first discussed it.
Yeah, they're looking to put it back as close to the fence line.
And then there's also, there's implied when a person does take that walk, they, because they're walking there, there's sort of a, an acceptance of the situation and an increased awareness as opposed to standing on a sidewalk in front of a store where you're expected to be safe. So, okay, just wanted to know.
Any other questions? So John, you made the motion, right? And Tina's seconded it. So is there any other final chance for questions on this? Okay, they're ready to take a vote, all in favor of approval of resolution number twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three. Please say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Next on the agenda is item number nine. Discussion on possible appointment of alternate members of the planning commission. And so the board had previously discussed looking to increase the availability of folks to serve on the planning commission. Had a couple of instances where the meeting had to be canceled because of the lack of a quorum. So it was felt that it would be good practice. It was always good to get more people involved if they're interested to exercise the opportunity that we have to have some alternate members for the planning commission. So before the board tonight is a potential to appoint three alternate members to the township's planning commission. The board adopted a resolution establishing this back in September and information on the openings was published in the September e-newsletter. Three applicants submitted their information for consideration and were recommended for appointment by the planning commission at its October meeting. Individuals before the board tonight for consideration are Laura Chadwick, Steve Crump, and Andrew Huspen. If appointed, these individuals would serve four-year terms. So board, do you have any questions? Actually, I have one, so I'll kick it off. So one of the questions that came up, I believe, with the planning commission was, the planning commission currently has seven members?
Nine.
Nine. So if someone's not available, and there's only eight members, that's still obviously way above a quorum for the planning commission. Can the chair of the planning commission seat one of the alternates if they're available and have them vote on any matters that come before it? Or does it only apply if there's going to, if there's a situation where there's not a quorum?
No, I believe if there is a member absent, the chair could choose to seat that member to fill out.
Okay, if the full line are there and the alternate, alternate member is present, they can participate in the comments, in the discussion, the Q and A, or whatever else, but they wouldn't vote for the particular meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, how soon before the commission meeting would the chair have the opportunity to appoint an alternate to sit in for a board member? I mean, usually you send out the packet by like Thursday or something like that before.
I send, I send the meeting packet out to the board to play official on Thursday, but the chair can make the decision at the meeting.
Correct.
The decision, the decision is made at the meeting.
So the alternate's getting the package too, as they're prepared?
Yeah, it'd be good practice, though, if you guys do this at the planning commission, either secretary or your Brian and the chair ask people to notify them if they're not planning to attend so that you can put on notice if there's three people that are missing and you can let the audience know, hey, we really need you to come prepared.
Check out what's going to be spoken about.
I request that and I send a packet, I request the letting of. Christian is lucky enough, they're going to be attending tonight.
Other questions?
The alternates are going to get, there's packets along with everybody else, that's normally.
Yes, okay.
Other questions from the board? I want to respect that Margie made a comment at the planning commission relative to the availability of the materials for the planning commission to the public. Obviously, for a board meeting, we have our materials posted on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. What does staff think about the practice of putting on the website the materials for the planning commission on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting?
A lot of the planning commission materials tend to be much, much more voluminous than what gives the board back it. Would you agree, Brian?
Yes.
It'll take up a significant amount of space on the website.
Okay, is there another way to have public access to those documents in advance of the meeting?
They're all, the agendas get posted, as soon as Brian sends them out, the agendas get posted. They're all public record, people can come in and look at them.
So the agendas are posted, but the detailed materials that someone needs to understand or is being proposed is not available on the website. They would have to come into the township and ask for those materials, correct?
Correct.
Is there a link that we could just put on the website to these various documents? Versus putting the actual documents on the website?
Something we could look at.
You also have to take into consideration that a lot of those documents are copyright protected.
Well, that doesn't mean the public is never allowed to access them, right?
Yes, but it also limits our ability to copy them, their copyright, their intellectual property.
So would it better practice then, instead of posting them, would it be to have an area set up where the public can come in and look at the, the detailed plans, et cetera?
Sure, we have this room down here, we can put a set of plans out there. You get, what, eight sets of plans with a submission? We could put a set out there.
Yeah, so I don't, you don't have to solve it tonight. We can just ask you and Brian and anyone else involved to consider what might be a reasonable practice to allow access to the documents ahead of the meeting for someone who has an interest in the detail.
And then all the other. It's like, just go to this room if you want to review.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a room that's accessible, right? As soon as you walk in, we can put them on the conference table in there.
I mean, just, just listening to the questions that come up at these meetings, obviously, some people are seeing it for the first time and they're trying to formulate what questions or issues they have. And if they, you know, were so engaged, they could have more time to do that. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So that's a bit of an aside. So does the board have any questions or comments upon the folks who are interested in serving as alternative members to the planning commission?
No, I just like you say, if the three people are here tonight, if they like the same event or.
Steve's here, Steve, you want to say anything? I think we know who you are at this point. You've been here often enough, so. Oh, we certainly appreciate your interest. We really want people to want to step up.
Well, just to that point, all three of those did come to the planning commission and they did speak and they did present their case. Steve, for those two.
Thank you. Okay, I will make the motion to approve the three folks as alternative members to the West Ocean Township Planning Commission. Those folks being Laura Chadwick, Steve Crump, and Andrew Huspen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any board comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions? Doug?
I have two, two comments. For putting the materials on, there's some things, some applications and letters we get that have people's personal addresses and may not be really fit for public knowledge. That's all. Some of those things are a little bit sensitive. And the second comment, question is that I think according to Sunshine Act, sometimes the planning commission member can't be there, but they can still participate through the phone. And the, except for first question, I should say, since we're not at that, is that okay for us to do?
I believe so. I mean, we've had board members here absent and participate, absent physically, but participate in the meeting and vote as long as they can hear or hear everything that is occurring, so.
And that would be up to the chair to arrange for that.
I believe that would be okay. Yeah, yeah. Kristen says yes. Yeah, regarding your first point, you know, we would rely on whatever materials are put available in the room before the meeting to appropriately review for any confidential things that, you know, or personal information, whatever, so. Yes, Margie?
I have a comment. I heard you say that it's up to the chair's discretion if he wants to seat an alternate. Is there a way that that could be if there is a member absent and there's an alternate available, that he shall seat an alternate in their place? Because I just feel if they're going to be alternates and they're going to be at these meetings, but for some reason the chair can say, no, we're good. You can participate, but not.
That's a good point. I was just assuming that the chair would automatically say, I want to have a full body, but it's a good point. So what is the answer to that question?
Just describing municipality, thinking about it, how it operates.
Yeah, but I think, I mean.
It's not shall, right, Kristen, it's may.
I'll have to look at it again. But I mean, I think, I think, I don't know if your planning commission has, a lot of planning commissions have their own roles, you know, for procedure, for example. If they wanted to adopt that, but I have to look at the MPC again on how it would state.
So we're going to follow what the MPC says, but we're going to ask Doug to, kind of, we've just gone through all this effort and we've got people willing to do it. So our expectation of the board at least to communicate to Doug is please seat somebody we've got a gap. Okay, any other questions? Okay, they're ready to take a vote, all in favor to say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Welcome, Steve. Okay, next is reports for the month of September, starting with our police chief, Michael Carroll.
Thank you. The report for the police department for September twenty-two, twenty-three, we responded to two thousand one hundred and fifteen calls for service. Forty-four of those were alarm calls and four of those alarms were valid. We responded to sixty-nine accidents, twenty-eight of which were reported accidents, and we drove a total of two thousand one hundred, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight miles. We performed extra traffic enforcement on Green Hill Road, Mackenzie Drive, Mackenzie Drive and Rosary Lane, Taylor's Mill Road, West Chester Pike and Sunset Hollow Road, South Ashport Drive, Kirkland Avenue, and South Five Points Road. We performed our normal monthly trainings and in addition to that, the department continued their work on their annual anti-bias training. Officer Hero attended a small-town interdiction training. Captain D'Amidio, Lieutenant Carter, and Lieutenant Brandisio attended an executive leadership workshop. Sergeant Holman and Officer Story attended FBI LEAD, which is leadership training. Officer May and Officer Vergilio attended an emergency vehicle operation course. And myself, Captain D'Amidio, Lieutenant Carter, Sergeant List, and Detective Sergeant Mauer attended an officer's safety awareness training. For the, in the area of the alarms, there were thirteen alarms that were billed at the highest rate for the violations. In assists to, we performed thirty assists to other departments for a total of thirty-two hours and we received fifty-two assists from other departments. I will be happy to answer any questions, but that's the report for the police department.
How many do you say were billed out at the highest? How many shows six on the violation count from the alarms?
You're right, I'm looking at the, the offense count to get to that. It was, it was seven. Well, you only see six violation alarms.
Offense count's seven, so seven.
We have forty-four alarms.
Six, six alarms were the seventh time or more.
And well, the seventh, the sixth and the seventh time were both match violation.
You're right, plus seven, that's.
Yes.
Mike, have you seen any statute of false alarms have decreased since the penalties increased?
I'll check it at the end of the year, but I think it's too soon.
Too soon, okay.
Other, any other questions for Mike?
The police community meeting was scheduled for this Thursday, but had, it was postponed.
That's correct, postponed. We don't have a new date because we're waiting to hear from one of the people that was going to be there to speak.
Okay, good, so we're waiting to hear back from her.
That's correct.
There was definitely some interest in that particular topic that you were proposing, so.
I hope.
I hope you can definitely try to find a date before too long.
We will find a date. As soon as, if I don't hear back from her, I'll schedule, we'll go with our original plan, but I'm going to give her a day or two.
Okay, no problem.
Let's wait and see what the Phillies do first. We may have to change it again.
I will assure you, we will not pick a date where the Phillies could possibly be playing.
Better check the World Series game.
That's what I'm saying.
I will.
Thanks, Richard, we have a serious date.
Because wait, I'm looking at my watch right now.
Just to follow up on that, you're going to make sure it's on the Facebook page, the website, the calendar, and send out the email to the usual folks in all that.
Yes.
Other questions for Chief Carroll, Margie?
Can you just take the notice off over at the dog park? I saw it this morning.
So I, I'm waiting to talk to Ken. I'm hoping to get a new date before we completely take it down, but it's something we're working on for tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, if I look at the picture of it, I have to, I could then, so glad to bring it up.
Okay, that was, that was promoting the event, right?
Yes.
Any other questions, Doug?
Chief, I'm wondering if I could bring this up now, but why not? In light of what's going on in our country, maybe not right here. But should it come here? And Jewish people are threatened with that because they support the right single position. Are you allowed to intervene and arrest them?
We, we enforce all the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Certainly, that sounds like that would violate several laws.
Hey, that is not, is it right to say that that is not freedom of speech and that is intimidation and harassment?
You're very hypothetical, but you can threaten people if that's what you're asking me.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the chief? Very good, well, thanks for the report, Chief Carroll. Okay, next on the agenda is board supervisors announcements. We'll start over to my left here with Tina.
Yes, Chair, I just had a few things. On September twentieth, I attended the PSET Zoom Classic Electrical Vehicles. On September twenty-eighth, we had our coalition meeting. On October fifth, I spoke in the Senior Center on Wilmar Street of what's happening in West Ocean. They'd asked me to speak about it in Chester County. I got lots of questions and great feedback. It was about an hour and a half, and they're very appreciative of informing me of what's happening in the community. On August fifteenth, I attended the Food Cupboard, which is located in West Ocean Township, their new ribbon cutting ceremony, which I also volunteer at every Friday. So it was a great honor to normally be part of West Ocean, but to be part of the volunteers. We added about five thousand additional square feet of space to the Food Cupboard, which was well needed. The basically fast, fast enough was there and they no more were leasing the building, so we basically took over the half that was connected already to the Food Cupboard. So it's a great addition of five thousand square feet where a lot of our people that come in don't have to stand out in the cold and the rain and the snow now. It doesn't mean I have a waiting room area within your space. So it was a great opportunity to take the hunch up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, John?
Yeah, a few things. On September twenty-fifth, I attended a virtual meeting of the township of over ten thousand in population and sponsored by PSET. A big topic there of conversation would have been the foreign investment services and the place being hurt everywhere from all across the state of Pennsylvania about how foreign investment companies are finding themselves in a state of crisis, and a lot of it's being driven by the lack of volunteers around there. September twenty, no H's though, by the way. Nobody handed silver bullets, but we're all addressing the same parts. September twenty-third, twenty-sixth, I attended the First Chester Cutting Sustainability Summit. We also attended the BRIGG session and opportunities for electric vehicles and reducing carbon emissions in our vehicle fleet. And we had good contact we made with PICO. We were able to follow that up with the possible grant funding for pursuing our electrical vehicle infrastructure project that we're presently pursuing. So we'll see on that place now. September twenty-eighth, we had a land planning meeting with the West Ocean Township to discuss the press proposals that we discussed tonight. Also visited the police setting range to see how the work in progress is going. And also we had a foreign investment coalition meeting that same day. And on today, on the seventeenth of October, I attended a virtual meeting along with Sean and Chris about grant funding organized by the Pennsylvania PA one fifty-six office about the fair share of grant opportunity that is available to us. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. My announcements are that the board met in executive session on September the twenty-second to discuss performance management objectives with township manager. Board met in executive session on October the third to discuss legal matters related to delinquent accounts for sewer and trash fees. I attended the Chester County Sustainability Summit on September the twenty-sixth. And subsequent to that meeting, arranged with one of the presenters at that summit for discussion, actually, on October the eleventh, with her and other staff from the PA governor's office on the infrastructure investment requirement. So this is about how to make sure that our anticipated project for a solar array fully meets all the requirements for the reimbursement from the federal government of the thirty or forty percent of the total cost. I found it an informative meeting and John and Chris both participated in that. On September the twenty-seventh, we did have a recognition and thank you event to all members of our township boards and committees at Ice Line, and it was a good evening. That's all the announcements. I have, next is township manager's announcement. Chris?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Our e-newsletter is scheduled throughout this Friday. The Harvest Festival will be this Sunday, October twenty-second, from two PM to four PM in West Ocean Community Park. The Hamlet, the next phase of the planting project at Hamlet Crest Park is scheduled for November fourth. I believe that's from nine AM to twelve PM. The SAC has been actively working on that. And they've been working with our parks department to make sure we have the supplies that we need for that event. They can sign up. There's information on our website on how to sign up. There's a feature news story right there, right on the homepage when you go on the website. Mr. Holman mentioned the shooting range work. That work has been completed by the streets department. I haven't toured the work yet, but I've seen pictures and it looks like they did a very good job and it was completed. And Mark believes it will be completed under budget. He hasn't reviewed all the final invoices yet, but it came in on the three-week timeframe that they had anticipated. And he thinks it's going to be under what they, what was originally budgeted for it. The park recreation open space plan, we received proposals for that. There's going to be a group of the two representatives from the board that are going to be involved in that task force, which are Ms. Smith and Vice Chair Gagne, as well as three members of park recreation, where we're going to meet next Thursday the twenty-sixth and begin reviewing those to select a consultant to complete that project.
And that will come before the board this year sometime?
Our goal is to have a recommendation to the board probably at this, hopefully at the second meeting in November.
Okay.
And I, we've, Ken and I have been in communication with the county to keep them aggressive where we are in the process. Mr. Holman mentioned the PICO rebate program. I filed our application on Monday. That program would make us eligible for fifty percent, the cost of the project up to sixty thousand dollars. So that was filed on Monday. We're waiting to see kind of what the results of that. So we'd be at, given the cost of the project that was awarded, we'd be at the max for what the rebate program would be.
So just FYI, that was the EV infrastructure project that we have.
Correct.
Under what?
Correct. And then finally, we were awarded a, we received a award for, from the Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust, second year in a row, for our low claim activities. So thank you for all of our employees for operating a safe environment.
I thought you were going to say the best for last. I didn't even mention it.
Yes, the best for last.
Let me read it out. Can I read it out?
Still my thunder, Mr. Chairman?
You had a chance.
My thing. I'm assuming you're going to announce our grant that we received.
I am, yes. Yeah, so I got a letter dated October the fifth. It says, Dear Mr. Walsh, on behalf of Governor Josh Shapiro, I am writing to congratulate you on a grant award in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars from the Community Conservation Partnership Program administered by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR. Funding the projects comes from a variety of sources, et cetera, et cetera. So this was all part of our overall plan to get as much grant money as possible to fund improvements to the West Ocean Community Park. We are, to go through the budget process, we had looked at doing this project in phases with phase one being the renovation of the basketball courts and improvements to the tennis courts, area drainage. I don't think you included the restroom, did it?
Phase one did not include the restroom, however, the application that we received from the county did, was the overall scope of the project.
So in total, that between the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the county and this two hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, we could probably well on the way to at least fifty percent funded of the whole project that we had envisaged. But we're going to take it in phases and, as I said, phase one is what I described in twenty twenty-four, so all good news.
So I would like to commend our partner recreation director, Ken Lear. He worked very diligently on this application. I want to make sure he's properly, properly recognized for the work that he put into this.
Do lead everything.
So we worked, we worked as a team on this, but he, he worked very hard.
We'll put it in the minutes. Excellent. Welcome, Ken.
And we're already starting to look at the, there's a DCD program that we're looking for additional funding.
Yep. Any questions for the board or township manager? Okay, then we'll move on to the next one, which is township engineers stormwater announcements and gray stone update.
So tonight for stormwater, a couple of things, we did talk earlier about the Basin Road project. What I have for you tonight is about the West Ocean Shopping Center, which two things to discuss or bring up to speed on. I wanted to get to the right spot here. Give me a second. So tonight, the first item before you. There it goes. Is, there is a application with PennDOT in the shopping center for upgrades to the traffic signals here at the North Concord Road intersection. And there is two applications that need to be, two state forms. One is a TE one sixty, which is the form that the township has to sign as part of the application process to modify and update the timing of the signal. And the additional form is what's called a M nine fifty AA form, which is where you acknowledge the permit that they're applying for to widen Philly Pike. So those two forms are, I have here tonight for the board's consideration to authorize, which Sean signed for the township. So the application can be forward to PennDOT for the upgrades to the signal and also the widening of the wall of Philly Pike.
And this is from the development, redevelopment?
Yes.
It's not something that's independent from that?
This is part of, this is.
It's part of their application.
And because the traffic signal is your signal, you have to sign off on the application, change the timing.
Okay.
And because it's in your township, you have to be a co-purpose and a co-protective to the application for the widening of the road.
And the widening of the road is to provide what? A turn lane in off Paley Pike?
Turn lane in and they're also modifying, they're modifying a turn, oh, on the wrong spot. Give me one second. They're providing a full turn lane along the front of the bank turn in and also modifying the entrance that's in front of Patrick Avenue as well. And additionally, to.
Modify in terms of what the?
What they do on that.
So additionally, also based upon the motion of approval, I have been working with the, their consultant, T and M, and they provided an update for tonight. So they have, here's your right turn lane in front of the state-owned parcel, which is, this is where Patrick Avenue, I mean, there's another turn lane as well. Goes over to the signalized intersection. They're widening the entire frontage. They're reconfiguring the output here slightly. They make it more of a right turn only. And then additionally, on this plan, you'll see after discussion.
So just, just go back to that, Brian. What's that crosshatching? What's that crosshatching there?
Right here?
No, the other bit there.
This bit here, that's striping. That's striping. They have proposed to better channelize the traffic.
Okay, so the right turn is on the inside of that?
Yes. The right turn is the gray.
Yeah.
And then more of a ninety-degree turn in and channelize it better.
Okay.
And that's all being worked through in PennDOT. They can't get the PennDOT permits approved until the township signs.
And that, that sidewalk there, is that, that was what we requested as being an additional sidewalk along Paley Pike?
Yes, I'll, I'll discuss that. That's next on my discussion after we review these two forms.
To widen the road, they're actually going to take some of that grassy strip that's right there now, is that correct?
Yes.
And also over here as well?
Yes.
They're going to require more stormwater management?
That is, the, the area along Paley Pike is controlled by PennDOT, and I'll be part of the PennDOT program if we're required during stormwater management. The last line we see here is a property line. Once they come inside that property line, then they have to comply with our stormwater regulations.
Okay, questions for Brian?
Is there a side? Now?
No.
That's the next thing we'll talk about.
So what we, right, right now, Brian, I think in the past, oh, yeah, we did have two forms, right?
Yes. There's a TE one sixty, which is a one-piece form, and then the nine fifty A is a two-piece form.
Got it. And these are standard forms, correct? There's nothing unique about the particular situation for us. Okay.
And the signal permit for the traffic signal is actually in the township's name, so we have to subject it.
So this, I get that the new lanes and everything, but this change in the signal timing is based on what, how, is it just to upgrade the signal to allow kind of a smart timed signal? And they'll figure it out as they look at the traffic volumes, what, how's it work?
It's all PennDOT.
PennDOT controls the timing. So they, they've been working out, PennDOT controls how the signals are timed on PennDOT traffic signals. So they've been working, being their traffic consultant, McMahon, have been working through with PennDOT on the signal timing requirements based upon the traffic study and the changes and all that.
And do we, are we responsible for maintenance of those signals?
That's why we have to sign. It's, in the end, it's our signal. PennDOT controls how it's timed.
Okay. And that's standard?
That's standard. Any traffic survey?
Any other questions for Brian?
Looks like they're going to be doing updating the pedestrian push buttons also?
Yes, so the new, new style push buttons for the pedestrian crossings. So there's, so this plan is not quite accurate to the new crosswalks. The new crosswalks are the piano key styles, but there is crosswalks and they're going to be putting the new, the new pedestrian style heads and new pedestrian push buttons that are standard, not the old style that you're out there.
And what's this video detection for phase one for an A with Z bell? Is that for like an overhead just to see if there's any traffic waiting to go in the intersection?
So part of Westchester, so Philly Pike has video camera detection for turn lanes. And that, that also helps as part of the monitoring system. So if we just redid the signal at Turner Lane, then one thing they do is they have to go out and test each camera. That's going to be tested bottom line, which is the same data all the others. They test for that.
Okay.
They, they can look at the camera, make sure it's focused, that they can use the camera, they pick on the camera on the computer where trips, where it generates what is tripped by a vehicle. And they're using video cameras instead of the old loops. We've put loops in the road, those are braved and freeze and the works, they're using video cameras. That's what that camera captures upgrades. Yeah, as well.
Any, any other questions for Brian? The board? Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the township authorization of Form TE one sixty and Form M nine fifty double A for this intersection and.
Yeah, what was that?
You, the application for the HOP. Okay. You second it, John? Good, thanks. Is there any public comments or questions on the motion? All right, we're ready to take your vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Tina, do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then the motion passes four zero.
She actually smells about, she has two. I'm hearing alarms coming over.
Maybe somebody could go check it out?
The bird over here.
So you might checking it out. This, it's all comfortable.
What are they, where are the students that said?
They have a, they have some, they have fireplaces.
Have fireplaces?
So additionally, as part of your conditional approval for the shopping center was a condition for the applicant to address the pedestrian access along Paley Pike. And we had a meeting. They, the team, project team worked on it, came back, presented it to me, township, and talked about it. And what we've, what they've come up with is a internal connection where they're going to connect the internal sidewalk to the north here. Along, using the existing sidewalk along the side of the bank, come out, propose a new sidewalk along Paley Pike to meet the crosswalks. Crosswalks are here. Existing crosswalk to the corner, there's an existing connection already in the corner of the parking lot here that goes back into the, into the, into the shopping center parking lot. And then in the drive aisle, that's, that's behind Acme, they're proposing another sidewalk from the existing curb cut at the Port Jump Island back to connect to the sidewalk system that's very adjacent to Acme.
So becoming eastbound, walking on Paley Pike, you would, there's a cross, there's a sidewalk there, is a sidewalk, is that a gas station there?
No, this is the bank.
This is the bank?
This is the bank. This is the gate. So I want, I wanted to show you here.
Okay, yeah, that's better. Yeah.
Yeah. So here's the existing sidewalk from Turner Lane across the bank to that drive entrance. And then it gets to a pedestrian ramp at the corner here and stops.
Yeah.
They're proposing to extend that back.
Right.
To tie in to the system that's in the back of, the edge of Chipotle and Acme.
And you don't have to walk along Paley Pike then to get into the shopping center?
From there. And then over here where the crosswalks are, they're proposing to extend the sidewalk from the easternmost crosswalk across the bank and use the side and tie into the sidewalk that.
Around the bank?
Around the bank to get into the back to go to shopping center there.
And that's what we asked them to look at?
Yes.
And you believe it's a reasonable?
Yes.
Cost of, well, if you're not cost effective, well, they wouldn't have proposed it, right?
Right. So still, it's the, with, with the existing topography and not taking down trees and having to relocate utilities because the utility controllers for your, you have utility control, you have utility controllers out here for the, for the intersection. You completely redesigned. That was the most efficient way.
Oh, I think it's a safer way.
Yes. So they're moving forward that design and that will be presented to a full design when they finish it. Chris Robbins is here tonight. We have an additional question for the shopping center. He's here.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome back at that, right?
Yes, thank you.
So that was my update for tonight for the shopping center.
So you made Chris wait for this whole thing? We couldn't have just entered it all?
Well, I wanted to come. You had asked, I think, in the last meeting if we could tell you the tennis court. And I don't think they'll ever permit it. So I don't think it's any surprise, but the retailer was Target and the restaurant is Chick-fil-A.
Well, thanks for the confirmation. I'm sure people will be very happy with that news. So Brian, what do you need from us tonight? Anything? Is this just an FYI?
This is FYI, that they met the condition.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Is the board have any questions about it? Okay. Sounds good to me. Is the board have any questions about it? Happy? Happy as the board can have a day? All right. Well, thank you, appreciate your efforts on that. Steve, have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate everything you've done with this. It's much better than it was going to be before. But I still think it's prudent to finish the sidewalk along Paley Pike across there. And I've walked it, and quite frankly, there weren't any obstructions. I mean, I walked it, the utilities are close enough to the corner, their trees are far enough back that there's easily a six-foot walkway along there. And I think it challenges people when they've got to walk into the back of Acme, along Acme, come back again to get around it if that's their stated purpose. And I think you're going to find that people are still going to walk across, across the front of there. I would put my sidewalk across there rather than walk around it, all zigzagged through the-
One second, it's, it's complete display here.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's right at the ac-, edge of the Acme parking lot, and there's a lot of space there. It's flat. It's not a difficult place to put a sidewalk into.
But Steve, I, I like it better the way it is because, and I think maybe I suggested it, because if you are walking up and you want to get to the shopping center, you know, whether you're coming in to get to the Target or any of these other stores or Acme, the first opportunity to have to get in away from the busiest highway is this new sidewalk down to the, that connects to the sidewalk that goes around Acme and around the whole front of the shopping center. That's where you want to be, versus walking further along Paley Pike and then navigating the busiest intersection that's going to be into this, this area. I think it's the worst situation from a pedestrian point of view. That's my opinion.
Are you ready to run a circle of PENDO and go there anyway, onto Paley Pike, because there's a sidewalk there, so you're not going to follow the path of the sidewalk?
I, I don't know what people are going to do, but I, I, I mean, it's definitely better than what it was. I'm just not now convinced that the piece of sidewalk in front of the bank is going to be useful.
Well, the only, the only is, if you're coming from, what's this road here? Patrick?
Patrick, of course.
The people are going to cross, maybe they're going to cross the street.
If you want to cross over there and get into the shopping center and you're heading towards Target, you might go that way.
Right.
I mean, one of the things we ask for sidewalks is, they're not always going to be used, right? And some people don't always think that's the best way for them to go. So it's not always a build it and they will come, it'll be, it's there if someone wants to use it.
Correct. If it's not there, people walk the street, okay? So the people in this neighborhood, if they want to go to, say, Aldi, okay, they're not going to walk all the way through the Acme parking lot-
To get to Aldi.
To get to Aldi, okay?
What's on this, what's on this side of Paley Pike with sidewalk there?
Yes.
So they're going to walk down and cross over Turner Lane, which is what I do when I park at the back and went to the Aldi. So it still works?
Yeah, it still works.
Chris, what is our timeframe for Target to be opened? What's the anticipated timeframe?
Uh, takes seven years to build, and we're going to turn over space over spring.
Over spring, twelve-four?
So twenty-four, so over spring twenty-five.
So this is a really, a building, it's kind of a renovation?
Yeah, yeah. They're going to build out the inside of the store, we're, we're rebuilding, we're going to redo the building to their, their format, and then they'll build out the inside. It's, it's a big project.
When, when do you anticipate the Chick-fil-A will be open for business?
That's quicker. Hopefully late twenty-four, third quarter, twenty-four.
Is the target four-five?
Uh, their size, yeah, it's about almost one hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Very good.
But it's a big one.
Okay, so this was just FYI, right? So any other questions on this? So we can let this gentleman go home. I don't see any, any other comments or questions? All right, you all, thank you for being here. This looks like, you know, a good step forward, and we appreciate you satisfying our finished door use requirement.
No worries. I appreciate how everybody worked through us, worked with us throughout the entire program. It's a long, long road, it was a good one.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Brian, any other announcements?
Anything on Bush then?
The only thing I have a very serious, I'm working on the punch list, which will be issued next week.
Punch list for?
Page one, open space and air map.
Page one, open space on the whole park?
Yes. I spent four and a half hours going through trails with-
Okay, so then we had an obligation to complete it. Has there been any further conversation with the developer relative to the board's position around the dedication of that not being something we believe is acceptable until the full infrastructure is built at least?
I spent four and a half hours with Rick Brachowski yesterday going through trails with Ray. Rick, Ray and myself, nine and a half miles of trails yesterday.
That's a twenty thousand steps, right there?
Rick covered his bike and I used the eight, the five, I read it out. But Ray did ask a question to me yesterday if the board was considering taking the open space.
Well, he was here while we had a discussion on it?
I, he was here, I said, that's as far as, he asked me if there's been any change, and I said I didn't.
Chris, have you had any contact from Lou?
No, I mean, I can't even narrow your position, and I think that there's two, there's two reasons to do the punch list, one is to get the complete bond released, and the other is to offer dedication, so they can do one without the other.
Okay.
And the, so when they put together that letter for requesting release, we kind of have an obligation, which to complete the punch list. And again, I think the board, I think it was the August fifteenth meeting, and I think the board made its position pretty clear to the developer and his attorney. I also think this is a good exercise to kind of see what needs to be done based on Brian, Rick, and Carolyn Harren's evaluation of everything.
Do you want to give us any flavor for your hard work, or do you want to get through?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of work that we don't address.
I will leave it at that for tonight.
Yes.
Do you have any estimation, just generally speaking, when the punches could possibly be completed?
That would be what, as far as when that, what, my punches is due by October.
But John, they're not going to want to, they're not going to want to complete the punch list if you're not going to accept the dedication. So that's-
Yes. That's, if, if they come back and say, I can do the punch list, we'll complete this if you're going to accept the dedication, it will be done. Or where's you going to sit on it and wait until you're ready for dedication, and then we'll get another punch list to go forth at that point. So that's, I can't tell you how long it's going to take if it's up to them, but like Chris said, the developer may not want to address the punch list if you're not willing, if the board is taking the open space for dedication, then it will be done.
Any other questions for Brian, Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank and compliment the board and previous people that have been involved with the trails project. I've walked several of them, and quite frankly, it's spectacular back in the woods. I walked up north in Penn, and I'm glad the land is not the bulk of the houses, and definitely keep the natural state. There's quite a few bridges back there and streams, and it's really, you know, beautiful.
Thanks, Steve. Also, come with a cost to maintain, is there anything, Margie?
Uh, yes, I agree with Steve, and I hope the board might pick around and reconsider when you'll take dedication of that, based on some Facebook posts and pictures I saw that people are walking in that aren't residents of Greystone. I was over there running Aramath, I went back, and then I saw a man walking a dog and came up. There's trail signs that are there. There's nothing that says trails are closed, so I felt pretty safe knowing when I know that it's like, well, it's maybe unofficial, but it's, it's open to the public. So I too went back there and actually got lost eighteen thousand steps later. But it's, it is, it's really nice, and this was supposed to be done in September twenty-twenty. And I was, you know-
So, Margie, I think you were away when we discussed this in August, I think you participated.
Yeah, I didn't watch either, I, I was here, but I-
The board has some serious concerns about the amount of work that's still needed to complete the infrastructure associated with the whole development and the wear and tear that has with the heavy equipment that's going to still be needed to be coming and going. So that was one issue specifically to Aram Avenue. And the other is, once we accept something, if there's a design problem, we, it's on us to then fix it. So to have a little bit of time to see what happens with washout on trails, resilience of the surfaces, other problems that they have to fix before we get it, a little bit of time, and that means maybe a year, is not a bad thing in the board's opinion. So that's why we have coupled it all together and said, we want to see a, a handover of something that is not going to hit us with cost to fix because we took it too early. That was one of the key reasons. Doug, you have a comment?
Yes, there's the, the one trail that's on the east side of Sharpless Lake that goes up the hill, that's going to be in a, in a zigzag, zigzag downtown. That's along the woods right now, but Phase Six is going to be right near there. So a lot of that woods, I'm assuming it's gone away. I could be wrong.
Hey, you have to look through the map.
So, so, yes, you have me through about opening really these trails because there's going to be possibly some construction right near there.
Well, obviously the developer's not policing it today, and, you know, so it's their responsibility. Just want to check, we're okay, right? We're not going to be, we don't have to evacuate?
Fine.
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right. Any other questions for Brian? All right, then, we're ready to move on to zoning officers' announcements.
Mr. Chairman, there are no new applications before the zoning hearing board. There will most likely be an application coming in November for an expansion of the SPCA. Brian, Andrea and I, I know Code Inspections have a meeting with the SPCA to discuss a project that they're doing that's going to require some zoning relief. So that application will probably be before the zoning hearing board in November.
What, what kind of zoning relief, setbacks?
Um, I think they need relief from the steep slope requirement as well as a special exception for the expansion of existing non-conformity. Is that correct, Brian?
It's an expansion, existing special exception.
Special exception, that's it.
Yeah, it's already permitted by special exception. They want to expand it, so we can come back to expanding special exception used to allow the SPCA, the SPCA used on the properties was allowed by special exception. They want to expand that use.
Okay, it's just the use that's, because they're expanding the footprint of what they're doing, it needs to have a, continue to, have to be a special exception for the large footprint they're going to have.
The special exception, Brian, correct, I'm wrong, the special exception that they received a number of years ago requires them to come back before the board, before the zoning hearing board for any modifications to the approval that was granted previously. So since they're doing a new plan, that would be a modification of the relief that was granted previously.
That's how they presented it to us, yes.
And what was the steep slope line?
I think there was some relief to the ma-
They were sure they had to look at that portion, they might be some steep slopes surface for, if they're looking to do a multi-story building, build into the slope.
But they've met with myself, Brian and Andrea maybe two weeks ago, and then they've also met with Code Inspections to discuss the zoning pro-, the zoning hearing board process. That will probably be in the November timeframe. Then they'll need to go through land development.
So with eight percent, they're proposing to the board here in November, or else they take a position on it?
Yes. But again, we haven't received the applic-, we haven't received the application yet.
Okay. And that was it, zoning?
Uh, yes. We also did have a, myself and our representatives for Code Inspections did have a meeting for an item that may be coming before the land planning, maybe coming before the land planning committee for potential zoning map amendment, but that remains to be seen.
Okay. Any questions for our zoning folks? Okay, well, we want to agenda item number fifteen, approval of the board of supervisors' meeting minutes of September the nineteenth. I had a couple of typo corrections. One, I'm not quite sure what we were trying to say, so maybe someone can help me. So it's page three of September nineteen. It's the one, two, three, fifth paragraph up from the bottom that starts, Margie Swart, resident of West Goshen Township. Further along, it says, "Mr. Carl Greco stated that the ownership is set up in a manner to allow the developer to stagger the sale of the lots."
Oh, the stated is added word. It should say to allow the developer to stagger the sale of the lots.
On page six, third paragraph from the bottom, it starts, "Mr. Walsh." On the second line, it says, "And ask if the full amount towards the projects outlined for twenty-twenty-four." So again, I'm not quite sure what was-
Which paragraph, Mr. Chairman?
The third paragraph from the bottom, it starts, "Mr. Walsh discussed." On the second line, it says, "And ask if the full amount towards the projects outlined for twenty-twenty-four." I'm not quite sure what the intention was there.
Uh, that was related to the projects in West Goshen Community Park, so I can adjust that accordingly.
Yeah. Now, the next paragraph, it's the last sentence, it says, "Mr. Walsh asked", it should say, "Mr. Walsh asked to confirm that breaking these projects are up in this manner."
That was on my list, too.
Okay, I think that was it for me. Has anyone else got some typos?
Page eight, uh, second paragraph from the bottom, "Mr. Smith asked about the services included, just insert the word, in, in the design of any phase approach." That's all I have.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended for September the nineteenth. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John. Is there any board comments or questions, or any public comments or questions on the minutes? Margie?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for these minutes and what you've taught Jennifer and just do for years, these meeting minutes for short story fiction. And it's just, I always knew that they were supposed to be like this, and it's really nice. So thank you.
Well, thank you, you're kind of, Margie.
Serious appreciation.
You try.
We, we've got where we want to be. This isn't exactly the level of detail that's needed, not too much, not too little, so I need some good job, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, did we take a vote? No, didn't we? So ready to take a vote on approval of the minutes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four to zero. Agenda item number sixteen is approval of the Treasurers' report for September thirtieth and the bills to be paid from these funds, the general fund, sewer revenue fund, the waste recycling fund, the capital reserve fund. Does the board have any questions on the Treasurers' report on the bills to be paid?
I just have one question relative to whether, please, if this is considered part of a uniform allowance or a GPS watch? Is that part of their, it is, and that, thank you.
Any other questions from the board on the bills to be paid?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. On page six, State Funds TD, bank checking, we have a balance there of fifty-four thousand twenty-two dollars. Now, is this from the liquid fuels funds that we are dedicated for the, for street paving?
One moment, find that page. You said page six of the Treasurers' report?
Yes, on the State Funds TD, bank checking, we have a balance there, this is number one, fifty-four thousand ninety-three dollars.
Yeah, I think it is. Um, yes, I believe that is from our liquid fuels account.
Now, that's one you left over from this year, we didn't spend it all.
Correct.
So this can be carried over to next year?
Correct.
Okay. Another question I had was, this is on page, not really numbered, but it's on the manual bills list for the, the, for today, page four. There's several entries there for dental vision plans set up by your payment. It's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven payments. What is that for?
Those are the, those are the payments associated, those the board's aware significantly is going out of business. That's for the new third-party administrator to administer the program. That's to kind of get everything set up. That was, that's to get everything set up so that everything is in place to go on January first. And they're, and they're broken up, they're broken up by department, so that's why there's multiple entries.
That's why you have so many different entries on it.
Correct.
So, and these are payments to, to just set up the relationship with them, is that basically?
Yes, that kind of gets everything set up and in motion for the beginning of the year.
Gotcha.
And once we start using them, we would just see I A, I A L L C, and then individual claims paid. Current, just like we see currently.
What happened to significantly?
They, they notified us that they have decided that they no longer are going to be operational.
It is because they were cheap. And that's why they can't keep going into business to be presumed.
They were good, and they made those claims.
Okay. Any other questions on the bills to be paid? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report and the bills to be paid from the funds as described. Is there a second?
Second then.
Is there any public comments or questions on the bills to be paid? Margie? Margie?
I just have a final request, it's kind of tricky, but when I, when I look at, say, the general fund, I just want to see how much is in the general fund at the end.
You have the treasures report?
Yes.
Yeah.
So to do that, the general fund, yeah, to do that, I have to add 10.9 and go down and then the next account and then 11.1, then I've got to add then another 10, like 16. Is there some way to just put end amount total in the general fund?
So you're saying, for example, let's make sure I understand. So for example, the general fund actually has one, two, three, four, five separate accounts. You want to say total general fund balance?
Yes.
And a sum?
Yes.
So you don't have to add the five numbers?
Well, I mean, I think it would be helpful, though.
Is this a manual recorder or is it automatically generated?
It's a manual recorder, Christine updates monthly with the bank balances. It's all done, it's done in Excel. And truthfully, I actually think the way she has it set up is the appropriate way because it's a reflection of the different bank accounts that the
No, I get it. I want to see the individual accounts, how much you did in CDs and all the rest of it. It's just, you know, you do have to, if you want to compare the year-on-year situation, you have to go and add those numbers up and then compare it to the 22 September report. Because I did that myself this month. Like, saw that we had credited in the farm fire insurance and the state pension in the balance for the general fund because it looked considerably higher than it did September last year and that's part of the reason. Can we ask him, Christine, if you wanted to do that?
I can talk to her.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. I want the motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:30. Is there a second?
A second then.
Thank you. It's not my fault. All in favor, adjourned, say aye. Mr. Aye? You're the one asking all the questions.